So we'll call to order the meeting, this meeting of the court. I believe so. Okay. This is a meeting of the Town and Mayor Planning Board. It is August fifteenth, twenty seventeen, at seven P. M. Town Hall. Full agenda, full board and full agenda. So we'll just jump right in. We'll reopen the public hearing for site plan review and five special permits for one twenty-nine Parker Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, David Click for the applicant. Um, we're here this evening in, just to follow up on the August eighth meeting in which the board had discussed closing the public hearing this evening. And given that, I just would want to first start off by asking if there's any other additional information between the eighth and now that had come to your mind that you may need in advance of closing the public hearing time?
Thank you. We're, I think we'll have a discussion to that effect. But I appreciate that. I guess we did have that conversation and I guess what I'd like to do first is just to acknowledge that since the last meeting, we did receive some correspondence from some residents in the town. And we're, you know, in receipt of that, we have copies here on our, in front of us. I assume you guys have received those as well. And that will be, my intention is to just put those into consideration for the deliberation period and not discuss them while the public hearing is open. Just acknowledge them at this time. And then let's move on to basically giving you guys one last chance before we start to consider the possibility. Do you have anything else to add at this time? It sounds like you probably could tell me.
At this time, we don't have anything further in terms of amending or revising the site plan until, or site plans rather, until that's appropriate. Just, um, just essentially would like to thank the board and echoing the letter that was sent to the board on the eleventh by Attorney Katanzaro, by thanking the board for all their time and effort throughout the course of this review for, for this project. It's obviously a comprehensive project which required a comprehensive review. Would also like to thank the town administration, the bill members, or Special Town Council, Wayne Amoco, the DPW, the Fire Department, the Police Department, everyone who was involved in reviewing and giving feedback on this, on this project. Just would want to remind the board and that just, and to be candid, that given certain contractual constraints on the applicant, that we are are looking for a decision this evening if you do intend to provide one or at the very least to provide a written decision to the town clerk by not later than August twenty-ninth, just given our constraints, not having to get into that in any more, any more detail. I would just further in closing, this has, this project has been thoroughly vetted by not only the planning board, by numerous other boards. And just as a recap on Attorney Katanzaro's letter, the life of this review of this project has gone to town meeting in which the concept plan back in September of twenty sixteen was approved along with the concept signage plan. The Board of Selectmen agreeing to this project has evidence by the memorandum of agreement. The CBA recently granting special permit under ten point four of the zoning bylaw. Conservation Commission giving their order of conditions on the project. Mass Fish and Wildlife, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, as well as feedback and approval from Queens and Fire. We just at this point feel as though the information's been sufficient to the extent that you are in the position to make a decision. And we hope that that decision is to grant approvals on each and one, each and every one of these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from town staff at this time? No, Mr. Chairman?
I do have an administrative issue that I have to digest on. I might ask to step outside with the applicant briefly. Hearing prior to a vote taking this.
Okay. And to members of the public. Any final comments? This is, to remind you all, this is the last opportunity for the applicant and the public to provide comment to this board for our consideration. Yes, sir.
I did follow along fifteen Detley Road. I just wanted to make sure you've taken into consideration our life on the weekends and where we're not working death and peace, you know, constant disruption to our lives with this.
I'm just gonna say I've had many opportunities to speak and I've done so. And I don't think I have anything new to add. I sent some comments in to Bill, so.
We have those coming.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just ask the question to the board if you believe that we have the sufficient information at this time to close the public hearing and move forward. So I'm gonna move that we close the public hearing for site plan review and five special permits for the one twenty-nine Parker Street project. All in favor? Okay? Thank you, everybody. We are closed. Our public hearing is closed.
So, Mr. Chair, I did prepare for your request and council's request. I did have, you had the draft on the decision, but also prepared the draft for the special.
The chair, the chair can make the motion or the closing.
I've seen it done, to close a hearing, we all see the vote, to close a hearing. If it's of importance to you, I could ask the board to go over.
No, no, we just want to make sure that everything's.
Closing, closing public hearings, if that's acceptable.
We're good, if you have it.
Anyway, if you like, whatever you want, I can distribute this. Well, it is not awful when you have, you know, you have a copy of mine that.
I think you should distribute it, I guess. I'm gonna just talk for a little bit. I mean, I think what we had discussed last time was having a brief discussion at the beginning of our deliberation period to talk about our process, which includes our schedule for, for the deliberations. And after reviewing, I guess reminding myself of the requests, the scheduled request and, you know, in the interest of, sorry, I shouldn't have to say that. In the interest of doing what we can to accommodate that, I asked that town planner reach out to each of you about the possibility of meeting a second time this week. With that, you know, just again, looking at the schedule, we have a scheduled meeting on the twenty-ninth, but that's not going to be in enough time. I know that we cannot meet next week. So the only possible way to give ourselves additional time beyond tonight would be to find another night. And I guess, in my mind, I, I would prefer to know sooner if that is a possibility so that we can consider how we move forward with the deliberations and, and plan our, you know, minutes accordingly between now and when we reach the end. So I assume everyone's been contacted by Bill. Is there, I guess, any objections or unavailability, nonavailability either tomorrow or Thursday? Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I have advertised, just sort of boards where I advertise both nights as necessary, as of right now. But I've advertised as sixteenth and seventeenth. So we can, the board has a box for it.
How does that work if one of us is absent? Does the, the mull and rule thing not apply anymore because the public hearing is closed?
Right, so all applies to public hearing, but not to the use in deliberations. So at this point, you are all qualified to deliberate. I just believe if there's an availability or regular number, we can alter it. But there is distinction between availability of hearing and for the complete use of services.
Okay, well, I guess that's good to know. However, it, it seems clear that we could have a quorum on an additional night this week if, if necessary. And we'll just have to confront that. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure yet how much time it's gonna take to move through this stuff. So I'm not, I think we can just leave it there for now and see how the night progresses. We've, you know, we're barely getting started here. So what Phil just passed out, and this is a, well, and what has been proposed to me by town council is a sort of process for moving forward. What you see, there are five pages, one for each special permit, has the criteria, and it's some draft findings. And so the proposal essentially is that we move through each one from top to bottom and tick 'em off. Now, in addition to that, so I guess I'll say this is a good tool. We'll be able to systematically move through this. However, if there are, you know, deal breakers, essentially hot topics that we determine as a group that we'd like to tackle first, I'm open to adjusting the order of our conversation. So, any thoughts? I mean, my intent is that we get to everything, you know, just might.
Methodically.
Me, me, right. This document would give us a methodical framework or we could just jump to some specific issues. It's gonna be a little bit, I think, here and there, but I think that's fine to me. So I suppose without hearing nothing, we could just get started right away. So, are there copies for others or?
Do you have some additional, I guess, with the draft you're talking about?
Just if, just if folks want to follow along, we're basically starting to discuss the special permit for multifamily use. Social, economic, and community needs. You know, we're, we're, obviously, this, the finding is, is illuminating the ways in which the board may or may not find that it meets that particular need.
So Greg, could I just, Mr. Chairman, apologies, could I just interject one thing?
Please, yeah.
Just that, um, Bill did a great job on putting this together. It, it just may be worth noting that, that the column on the left are the criteria taken straight from the bylaw for each of these special permits. And then these are proposed findings. That's where, that's where that first column, that's where each of these columns comes from. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. So, I mean, I can, you know, I'm trying not to have to read through all this, I guess, exactly.
A lot of people that raise points if they have them.
We certainly could do that. And, I mean, it could, we could start just kind of with, with anything. So, you know, I'll start from the top. Social, economic, or community needs.
I have a comment.
Please.
I don't think that the fact that the project concept plan and signage plan were approved by town meeting necessarily demonstrates that it meets a certain use. I, I'm not saying that's not true. I'm not, I just don't think it's apples to apples there. I don't, the third point under the first bracket here, the concept, the fact that the concept plan and signage plan were approved by town meeting doesn't seem to me be pertinent to the idea that it meets a certain use or that it meets certain needs in the community, merely that it was approved in a vote. I just don't see it being germane to the question.
I disagree with that.
Yeah, I disagree. I mean, the fact of the matter was it was put forth at the town meeting. The town had the opportunity to look at it, decide for itself whether or not housing was an important enough issue to include it in the concept plan. So I kind of, I don't see how that can't be grouped in.
So you think things people vote for always serve social, economic, or community needs?
I'm not here to, I'm not here to speculate on people's motives.
I'm just saying, to me, it just seemed out of place, but I'm fine with leaving it if you're married to it.
I'm just saying that housing has always been an important aspect of the project.
Absolutely.
From its inception all the way through till now.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
So I, I think, you know, not to dwell on it any longer, I think it's an integral part of this issue making progress.
I guess I'll just interject that as we tick through these issues at any time, we're, any of us are free to reference any comments, I mean, obviously your own thoughts, any comments that were received from the public, from staff, from anywhere else that are pertinent to that particular comment or, or, sorry, that particular finding.
Well, too, I believe Maynard implemented the, the housing production plan and this multifamily use goes toward helping us to meet our, our requirements for affordable housing as well, so.
I think the first two bullets are right on.
Okay. Traffic flow and, and, you know, I'm gonna try to push us forward. So you slow me down, I guess, and traffic flow, safety, including parking, loading as related to the multifamily use. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. This, this is one that will come up a couple times on my end. And this, this in a way ties into a lot of stuff, but I had a, okay. I did propose a condition that relates to water consumption on the project. That there's a, if you look in your packet in the second staple, there's the cover, it was from Sam, the second. There's an email from me with the draft condition that says all applicants for building permit shall be accom- all applications for building permit shall be accompanied by a certified letter from a professional engineer testing that the subject of the permit application can achieve a thirty percent reduction in water consumption over baseline calculation as defined by the blah, blah, blah version four, annual water use reduction. So that basically, you know, it ties directly to water consumption as it relates to this multifamily use. It would relate to, the way it's written, it would relate to all buildings on, on the project.
So this was not included in the draft decision that we went over in the public hearing?
Correct, this, this.
Is there a reason we, you didn't want to get feedback from the applicant on that or?
Well, I did. I submitted it during the, the, the public hearing and, and didn't get comment.
Okay.
So, yeah, and again, I guess, just to, to be clear, my understanding is that, you know, none of these, I, I don't think, but we should be sure that these comments, I, I don't think any of them have actually been, you know, added to the draft. So there's sort of like the draft, there's a bunch of other input here that we may or may not elect to add.
That's correct. Just to clarify, you have a clean copy of the draft, which is the same we had last week dated October third. August third. And in addition, then we have a set of comments that were generated by a town engineer. They were reviewed by legal and, and they, you have those in front of you. Those have not been incorporated as yet, so we definitely haven't discussed those. The others, the other comments, I think are all pretty selfless, but nothing has been added since June. August sixth, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, this might be helpful. If the board were to vote to approve each of the special permits, the, the motion would be something like, I move that the board approve the blank special permit based on the findings discussed and as, as conditioned in the draft decision, subject to the following modifications to the findings and subject to the following modifications to conditions. And that's where, that would be where you would modify, based on the discussion that you would be having now, where you would put in the changes that we would incorporate into the draft. So that way you can vote on, you, you have something to vote on that calls out changes to the decision, the draft decision that you have. Does that make sense?
I guess we're, we're tracking changes live here, is that how?
Well, I, I would say when the, when the board gets into substantive discussion and if it decides looking at a condition that has something to do with one of these, if there's discussion that says I think this, this condition needs to be modified, then I would and I assume Bill would be taking copious notes at that point. So that the end of the hearing, I mean, the end of the deliberations, we would be able to read back to you any modifications that you made during the discussion. I just don't think there's any other way to do it.
So it sounds like we'd be breaking up each of the special permits to help keep it cleaner?
Oh, sure. Well, yes, that was my suggestion, that each special permit be considered in, in sequence. If need be, I think you could, you could move on to the next special permit without having voted and go back if necessary, but the cleanest way to do it is really to do one permit at a time. And then if any of the conditions that come up, I will take notes on that, you will take notes on that. So you can supply those before you take a vote on each of the special permits. So we may end up repeating ourselves, if the condition changes as to one, it's gonna change as to the others as well.
Okay. Wayne, I guess, just to clarify, I see under the title additional recommended BHP conditions, that's the last sort of three pages of this first packet that we have. And I guess I'm just, if we're gonna indeed go through, you know, our findings in this sort of orderly way, if you think of one of your recommendations that's germane to what we're talking about, just let us know. I think we'll probably tick through it anyways, but just to help inform our discussion that there, there might be additional things to consider.
Be glad to, just, just to summarize, Mr. Chairman, the, the packet that you have there that says engineering comments for special council for recommendations, condition twenty-eight had to do with the sewer, which is exactly what we worked out for the last hearing with the applicant. That was my rendition of the edits and the town council modification. Fifty-six had to do with town inspections and what was agreed upon with the applicant. And the rest of that, where it says additional recommended BHP conditions, most of that, actually all of that came out of the last letter that we generated right, dated last Tuesday that I kind of submitted to the board summarizing all of the paperwork. So that, you've seen all that before, but I'll be glad to bring it up as you.
If there's something that is relevant.
No problem.
So we didn't get any feedback at all regarding this Greg's proposed lead certification?
I didn't see the comments from you. I mean, we passed them off a while back. Will you get familiar with the mission again?
So keep that in consideration. We'll, we'll loop back to the issue, I guess, as it comes up. Obviously, the same criteria come up in every special permit, so it'll come up again and we can consider it. I guess maybe just to jump to a big one here while we're talking about adequacy of utilities and other public services, the issue of condition twenty-eight might be one that we just touch on right now. Condition twenty-eight being the apportionment of the sewer improvements, you know, proportional sharing, as it were, of the costs of the improvements in relation to exhibit C, which I don't know that we have here, but it's basically the, the StanTech memo that kind of defines the proportionality.
It was distributed to you last, yeah. But you do have it also.
It hasn't changed, it's the same.
It's on the back of the, the draft decision.
Okay, great, great, great. Well, the table is exhibit C, not the entire back, great. Just want to bring this up. This was kind of a, kind of a big one. So if anyone has concerns, comments, you know, a reminder that, my understanding is that our ability to require contribution ha- has to be, we have to demonstrate the proportionality and that's essentially what exhibit C does in that, you know, we, if we have a different opinion, then we need to justify that in relation to what's been prepared by our consultants. All right, great. The wording, again, has been hashed out by legal, but it's really that particular, in my view, the detail of the thirty-three percent contribution as defined in the, in the exhibit C. So, good. So going back to the, well, I'll just say any other concerns about multifamily use in relation to adequacy of utilities and other public services. Okay, neighborhood character and social structures.
I would suggest that in the first bullet, we cut the words from the first "the" through additionally and merely state the buffering and landscaping as proposed soften the transition to the adjacent single family neighborhoods. I don't particularly feel the design of the project contributes, creates neighborhood character and social structure. But I agree with everything else here, of course.
So the proposal is strike.
From additionally back.
So beginning with the buffering.
Just say the buffering and landscaping as proposed soften the transition to the adjacent single family neighborhoods.
Concerns or comments on, on that proposal?
I mean, I think the mixed uses, you know, are a really important part of this project. I, I mean, I, I'm not in the butter, but I look nearby as well. And I think the type of uses that will bring to this part of town is really a big reason why it's, you know, gotten so far and people are interested in it.
I think the uses are, I think you're correct on usage. I just do not think it creates a neighborhood character and social structure.
I don't know that the neighborhood character and social structure are quite the right words I would use. It does, it provides a de-intensification of zoning. So you go from commercial to a higher use residential, which is multifamily, down to single family. So it provides a transition point to maintain the integrity of abutting single family residential. I don't think, though, that it necessarily creates neighborhood character and social structure.
Yeah, I think that, I think your warning, that is.
Absolutely. I have nothing, I don't disagree with what you said.
Because I think that is important to maintain the neighborhood character around the area as well.
You repeat that word, not basically.
Um, the, the multifamily residential, it, it kind of acts as a, I don't know, de-intensification is quite the right word. Acts as a transition zone between commercial and the single family residential use. Maintaining the character of abutting neighborhoods.
Okay, impacts on the natural environment. Stormwater management, irrigation, so forth, de-icing. And then potential fiscal impact. I think, I believe that that's gonna be the same for all, right?
Yeah, I was pretty much, yeah, I threw a couple, if I tried to make some was, you know, if there was anything that I thought needed to be emphasized by that particular permit. So it's worth reading because there's probably a couple things I think.
Okay. In this case, it's really just relying on the fiscal analysis. Okay, well, let's, let's move on to the continuing care. Okay, well, let's move on to the continuing care retirement center, community, social economic community needs.
I think in the, that first section on social economic community needs, and maybe also referring back to the first one, if that sec, I know that the signage plan was approved at town meeting, I don't feel like that's really relevant wording. Is that something that has to be included for any reason?
The last bullet you're talking about?
The, the last bullet, without the words and associated signage plan. Is there a reason that, do those have to be included because they were holistically approved? Or approved as a pair?
I, no, my reasoning for this, on both of those, was that the, because it's a holistic project, the concept plan included all these uses, so that was something that was necessary to emphasize. The signage plan really only came into it, and it didn't, it could be stricken without losing any of the essence of that in my opinion. It was, I guess it was in the completeness.
Yeah, I mean, because it was, it was approved, no doubt about that, and it affects all of these different uses. I just don't see how that relates to the social economic or community needs. I don't know, I don't know that I feel strongly enough about it, I just want a clarification.
I'd be happy to eliminate it.
It's more about neighborhood character, I would imagine, right? You know, sort of aesthetic visual.
Yeah, if, I mean, if you want to talk about where the signage plan, yeah, it would be neighborhood character, because you're looking at something, then, that is a more residential or pedestrian type level versus a commercial type of signage. If it needed to be included somewhere.
Would you strike that and just leave that the project concept plan was required?
Yeah, that would be my opinion.
I'll do that, who should us?
Traffic flow and safety. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. Touched on a lot of that on the first one. It's all, you know, relevant, same stuff. Our neighborhood character and social structures.
Same changes to the prior.
Impacts on natural environment. And fiscal impacts. Okay. Drive-through use. Again, social and economic, economic and community needs. Traffic flow and safety. So I do have a question about this one. There was, I'm not remembering exactly where it, where it came up, but there was a question about revisiting the design of the queuing line or something like that down the road?
Yes.
Is that a, was that a condition?
Yes. So, fifty-one.
Condition fifty-one. Thank you. Planning Board reserves the right to review compliance with the terms and conditions of this decision at any time. Review compliance with the terms and conditions of this decision at any time, specifically with respect to the pharmacy drive-through. Within one year from the effective date of this decision, within opinion as to the safety and adequacy of queuing room as proposed within the approved project.
Seems reasonable. I mean, we talked about several alternatives and the applicant basically said his ability to reconfigure some of the parking if necessary, if it determines to be a problem, if it ends up being a problem.
So you feel like it's practical to actually make some change to the queuing?
Yeah, I know that myself in my traffic engineer, I looked at that and felt that it was, it would be able to be done with the loss of some parking in that area. And I think the applicant agreed that if it becomes a problem, they want to make it work, too.
Sure, sure, sure.
And this condition seems reasonable, that we have the ability to require them to initiate changes. This, I mean, the way it's, it's wording here, it basically says that the town in, the difference was between the original condition, which I wrote down, was that we were going to have the applicant come back within one year, but this allows the town engineer to come back a little before. I would imagine the applicant would want to be there, but. If you wanted to be more stringent, you could add a sentence that's all saying that if the Board determines changes are required, the applicant shall do so within three months, six months, whatever the board feels adequate, just so that you don't leave it open-ended.
Okay. I just, I, the first, half of the first sentence kind of hung me up. I mean, reserves the right to review compliance with terms and conditions of this decision at any time, I guess that's kind of just implied, right, about. I mean, you know, I don't, we don't need to wordsmith it. I guess the question to the board would be, is any, does anyone feel, is anyone concerned with not being specific as to a timeframe or how a modification to a, to a, I guess, a non-compliant condition, you know, how that's addressed?
Can you just add a, does that sense it says, should the board determine that the modifications required, the applicant shall within two months fire file of time for site plan amendment through however. I mean, it's something that we would, if you, if you give me the essence of what you want and I think we want it, the condition has to.
I guess my feeling is that they have an incentive to make it work, so I'm not worried about it, myself.
So leave that condition as is? Or?
That's, that's what I, that's how, that's what I feel.
That's maybe.
The only question would be if, one year of the effective date of this decision, if it's not even built yet, for whatever reason.
Would it be effective data? You know, the opening of a pharmacy or something?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
That's probably effective.
From the first date of operation.
Oh, yeah. Certificate lock, is it maybe?
Sure. See you.
Okay. So that was traffic flow and safety, back again on drive-through. Adequacy of utilities and public services. Neighborhood character and social structures. Impacts on the environment and fiscal impact. Any other comments on this one?
No.
That one did do a different fiscal impact.
Sorry, sorry.
He did. Noted.
Good for the tax base. Good, noted, thank you. The capture of local dollars.
In the wild. Stop the leak. Maybe we should just ask if there's any issues and must have, say, a little time.
Sure, I mean, okay, I mean, we've got these last two, I mean, I feel like this is the last one that we're going to have some discussion on. On parking waivers, does anyone have any concerns about the parking waivers?
I don't.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, going back to the beginning, you know, the multi-use.
Yep.
I might have been reading something that was discussed. Under neighborhood character and social structure, was it the consensus of the board that we were going to strike the mixed-use design of the project creates neighborhood character and social structure?
We change this to alternate phrasing.
I have multifamily, multifamily residential as transitional zone to the adjacent residential suburbs.
Additionally, the buffering, if that stays in?
No, I was, I was thinking.
That condition just de-buffing it.
Okay, sorry.
The mixed-use design, so that would include the multifamily, creates a neighborhood character and social structure. So arguably, the mixed-use, the continued care facility, just the mixed-use.
Mixed use means commercial and residential, though. So if you're just, if we should, we either should be calling out one specific.
I think we should call out the multifamily.
Okay.
So I would argue that the multifamily project, you know, creates neighborhood character and social structure, because it's basically a neighborhood in and of itself inside of the.
That was my thing, it's sort of worth the board, because that'd be confusing, but my intent was, and now after you guys talk about it, I can see it is confusing, but my intent was to talk about that it's a self-contained site in terms of having all the amenities, so it's essentially a property and community here, instant community, because you have the adjacent uses that presumably would be, you know, you could, you're likely to stay there. And the concern that I was trying to highlight was strictly that it works as transitional to the adjacent residentially-zoned areas, particularly considering alternatives for the underlying zone. That was, that was my thinking. But that, I hurt my feelings. It's like Shakespeare.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, in an effort to be a little consistent with the thinking.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that maybe mixed use is just multifamily. We reference multifamily, project creates a neighborhood character and social structure in and of itself.
I would say multifamily project or, or multifamily use as proposed creates blah, blah, blah. Because you need to, you need to tie that into what they're proposing. Because if they took out the community center, they're losing that community effect. If they broke up, broke it up on anything else, which a theory would have to come back but related.
Correct, but it's all, theoretically, it's all going in as a self-contained community. It's got the community center, whatever else that they can't call off the top of their head, Jim, or it's going in there, so. I mean, just to strike it in its entirety, I think it's a, it's harsh. So, just my thoughts.
Okay. We had no comments on parking waivers, the special permit for parking waivers. Internal illuminated signage. General comments?
Yep, so I don't support it holistically as a blanket approval. I wrote that in an email to Bill. I, in my years of working in zoning and historic cultivation, in areas where you're trying to emphasize a community or a pedestrian-oriented development or neighborhood, internally illuminated signage is a far more commercial use than it is in a mixed-use type development. There is a substantial internally illuminated sign out of the street, which I wasn't actually here for when we discussed it on the planning board. But I would prefer.
The pylon?
Yes, the pylon sign. I would prefer to limit the signage to reverse channel it or external illumination only. And I had a quick question about the grocery store. It was approved for Market Thirty-two. Should another grocery store go in? That approval for Market Thirty-two signage that was done at town meeting, that approval would not extend to the following, in my opinion, or question, it seems like it would not extend to the subsequent grocery store use, because that was related only to the specific contents of the Market Thirty-two sign. So internally illuminated channel-it letters, which were approved under the Market Thirty-two signage plan and whole packet that was submitted at the town meeting, it seems that that would not extend to a future, because the content of the signage changes.
I think there was a disclaimer on the concept plan that said, you know, for illustrative purposes only, these were unproposed tenants. I don't think there was anything on the concept plan that stated Market Thirty-two was the definitive supermarket tenant. Arguably, if we approved internally lit signage at Market Thirty-two, it probably would be able to extend to another supermarket.
Were that the case, and we were sort of given the Market Thirty-two signage as, well, this was all approved at town meeting, it cannot be changed. So if it's only a artist's representation that has no bearing for one direction, it can't be like absolutely enforced in one direction and absolutely untouchable in the other?
Well, arguably, it's internally illuminated signs for a supermarket, you know, Market Thirty-two being.
But we were told you couldn't change any tiny detail. Because the town meeting approved that.
I think you mentioned a disclaimer, though.
But if there was a disclaimer, then I don't think that would have been true.
I believe what the board was advised by its lighting consultant in the discussion of this, was that the internal illumination was called out specifically and approved by town meeting for the signage at the front, the pylon, regarding, I just want to make sure I understand which, whether you were talking about the pylon in the front, you're talking about.
I'm talking about the, so the signage for Market Thirty-two, the actual plans, the renderings, the photo renderings that they included, and the signage information that was included as part of the concept plan
Right.
for Market Thirty-two was explicitly called out.
Mm-hmm.
And their signage was planned out on that plan and called out as internally illuminated.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if we're saying that Market Thirty-two signage was approved as internally illuminated, that's fine, I don't, I'm not arguing that. My question is then, if Market Thirty-two, let's say they go in or they decide not to go in and Shaws decides they want to come there. That Shaw's signage was not approved at the town meeting, and so I'm questioning if they were to come back and do that sign, or signage for another brand or another company grocery store, would that internally illumination approval at town meeting stand?
I think that's addressed in a little bit in beauty.
I mean, I can look in the bylaw in a minute, but I would have a hard time defending a condition or other provision of decision that limited it to the specific tenant. If the board's found that that signage was approved as internally illuminated, and I'll be honest, I'd have to look back in my notes and see what the board's agreed on, on that. If the board agreed that that was approved by town meeting and then it can't be, that that can't be varied, then it would apply to a different tenant.
Okay.
But again, but the question of whether the board has found and whether the lighting consultant said that was approved by town meeting, I'd have to go back to my notes and rely on Bill as well to look back at that.
So that was just a question I had. The other thing I wanted to point out is that for the tiered signage, I think it's tier three is the smallest sign. I think forty-five square feet is far too large. You're not talking about buildings that people are driving by at sixty miles an hour and they need to find sign. You're having somebody driving through a parking lot at maybe twenty miles an hour trying to find a sign for where they're going. Their pylon sign is their main means for attracting potential customers or for helping with wayfinding. A forty-five square foot sign is necessary possibly when you're going over sixty miles an hour, but it's not for people that are driving under. So I would propose that that max sign for tier three is thirty-two square feet, not forty-five. Thirty-two is, in my years, ten years of dealing with signs, is more than substantial. In most other districts that I've worked with, both historic and nonhistoric, it's actually a bit smaller. So it's just a suggestion.
So for everyone's reference, the mechanism to change any of the signage details would be the second and third to last page of the draft discussion. It's Exhibit E, where that basically, I believe that's where all that's captured, all the square footage stuff, that basically what Mark put together for us. And I think Sam would be looking at B, one, D.
Yeah.
The proposal is to change the forty-five to a thirty-two. And so in addition to that, it looks like A, general signage guidelines, that's where we've captured. uh, A, general signage guidelines, that's where we've captured the current recom- the current, uh, proposed language on the lighting. I believe individual internally lit cut letters, text symbols or logos. Signs shall not be composed of single box painted plastic elements containing multiple letters or letters and logos. Um, can can you, from my understanding and memory, if you can, uh, in terms of external, we, I I'm clear on what external lighting would be.
Yeah.
Uh, reverse channel lit, was that shown to us?
Yeah, so the reverse channel lit, um, is commonly referred to as halo lit signage, it means that the front panel is opaque and that light cannot shine through it, so that the way, the way that you get lighting from for these types of signs is that there is a glow on the building, so they're they're, um, kind of just seen as as a shadow, more or less, um, that and you can have them in color, you can do them in die-cut shapes, so if somebody has a really intricate logo, there are ways to do them, um, creatively to be able to achieve, uh, the wide variety of needs that different companies have. I've never had one say they that it was impossible to do their logo, and I've had seen some pretty fancy logos in my days, um, but yeah, it would it would be versus the letters what that are, like for Wendy's, you wouldn't have Wendy's cut out in glowing red, you would have the letters cut out and you would have a glow behind it, does that help?
Yeah.
It's what we, it was, it's what we approved for the main, Mill and May building signs.
That was very.
Yeah.
And it was shown, he showed that, right?
Yeah. Yeah. That was the letter A versus the letter D.
On the smaller tier, was it tier three's the smallest tier sign?
Mm.
In your experience, you know, I'm just concerned about getting, having the smaller signs be muddled, because there's a lot of, you know, group of tenants and their signs are, you know, concurrent, um, I think that was one of the concerns, the lighting consultant did have that, about the muddling effect that, uh.
He was ta- yeah, w- so when you have smaller letters, um, he was he was saying that you can't illuminate them without having it look fuzzy, or if you have it on a textured wall, it looks fuzzy, I have never had that experience. You can Google it and look up, I mean, I I don't know if I can pass my phone around as evidence, um, but you can look up reverse channel lit signs on brick buildings, and there is no issue seeing the letters. Um, for smaller letters, like if it, uh, if it were, say, like if Shaw's has the Osco pharmacy, I don't know what the pharmacy associated with Market Thirty Two is, um, but the word pharmacy might just be cut letters versus reverse channel lit, so it would just have the Osco portion lit, and then it would have the other part, um, be just a standard cut letter that would match that same, whatever the face is of the Osco portion, or the larger sign. Does that clarify what you were asking?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just a little churning around inside of my head, but, um, you know, I think, um, I have a pretty good idea what that what it looks like, I sh- I saw the handout of Shaw's, so I didn't mind that, but, um, so, and I trust your opinion, so. Alternatively, I I think, what about setting times for illumination? If we were gonna be discussing that as soon as those, uh, businesses close, they turn their lights off, I mean, I I think that's important.
Yeah, there's a whole hours of operation, hours of signage on, that's all in that same section of the own end manual we have to address.
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to limiting lighting, um, I don't think that it replaces, I I don't think you could swap it out though for utilizing channel lit letters versus the reverse channel lit, like the shine-through die-cuts versus the opaque.
So for the halo lit, would it be, you know, would that be, would they be on all the time at night, or would they be turned off?
Um, in my experience, they generally get turned off when the business closes, um, or shortly thereafter when the remaining, most of their lights go out. Um, there are some businesses that keep them open, I don't know what different plazas around here do, um, you could regulate it either way, it could be, it could be to coincide with the main lighting on the property, which I think goes off at eleven. Um, but there, the the nice thing about the internally illuminated signage now like that, cause technically reverse channel lit is considered internal illumination because it's in, the illumination is inside the structure, um, they can, it's it's like a dial, I mean, you can just turn it down if it's too bright, it's relatively easy to adjust. Um, so that's something that's also that we could keep in mind if if we are concerned about illumination in general on the site.
Oh, which can't, sorry.
Or anything that's specifically shining onto a budding residential, that's always something that could be revisited at some point, um, as we are revisiting a lot of different things in the conditions.
So, Sam, are you you saying you are for either externally illuminated signs or the halo lighting?
Yeah.
Is that your, that's your?
Only.
Okay.
Only, no, um, foxlit signs, no traditional, uh, channel lit signs where they shine through, yeah.
I'd like to offer my comments, um, I hope that the board considers granting a special permit for the internally illuminated signs, uh, that's written. I think that the applicant and the development has done a great job, um, considering light pollution, and I think that going off of the supermarket lighting that was approved by town meeting shows the community is comfortable with that style. I think one of the items listed under the social economic or community needs, the economic benefit for the project, uh, is something to consider. And I think a lot of it kind of comes down, not a lot of it, but I think some of it comes down to a matter of opinion or taste over what people prefer. Um, so I think for me, I I would be very comfortable with the internally illuminated signage, and I don't prefer the external illuminated or the halo signs, that's just my opinion. Um, and just one other thing that was mentioned before was the scale of the signs. I am comfortable with what our sign consultant provided, and, you know, I think, I think what was discussed, um, you know, I'm comfortable with. And I'm not in favor of reducing that, but, um, you know, if everybody else is interested, then I'd hear more about it.
Just to touch on one of Megan's points, I too, thinking of light pollution would not be particularly in favor of external illumination for the signs. You tend to get a lot more brightness, a lot more cast going in all directions, you know, could be up, could be down, um.
I would however support the reverse channel lit, uh, point that Samantha made.
I'm not sure I'd be in in favor of of requiring the the halo lit, I think some of the effects of, um, the, um, whatever you wanna call it, for the the channel lit, regular channel lit letters, uh, can be mitigated through, um, adjustment of the the brightness and intensity. I'm just not sure I I see a a need to require the the halo lighting.
I mean, I think one of the important factors is exactly what Brett mentioned, is the fact that you can dim them, turn them off, modify or whatever, that they're not gonna be on twenty-four, seven, so, um, I think, I'm just trying to picture it in my mind, it's it's, apologies, it's difficult for me because I'm almost a hundred percent colorblind and blind, so trying to visualize, uh, channel lit, halo, it it's it's just a little difficult for me to roll around in my head, even when I see it, I don't know if I'm actually seeing what other people see as far as the effect of the and the color, but I think as far as consistency goes, since the supermarket was approved with the internally lit signs, not the halo lit, um, with the, I'm confusing the terms here, halo and then what's the channel lit?
It's cha- channel lit, mm-hmm.
Channel lit lights. I think just from an aesthetic standpoint, it might be more consistent in with the channel lit lights versus the halo, uh, that's just my opinion.
Does it make a difference if their main entrance sign has reverse channel litters?
I think it's the.
There's already two, I mean, there's already two different types on them.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's just the top of the, uh, the pylon that has that.
It's the, it's the the ma- masonry walls, those are all reverse channel lit letters, if I remember correctly. Let's say like Mayor Christine or whatever the development name is.
And I think, should we happen to go whichever, right, if we happen to go with the, uh, whatever you call it, channel lit letters as opposed to reverse channel lit letters, uh, I think we have to be, recognize that Mill and May would likely come back and say, well, why couldn't we have that? Since we've already ruled that they can't.
I'm not sure they would, uh, cause they've already got a an approved signage plan that they've moved forward with, so I'm I'm not sure that that would.
But I I'm mindful that tenants always want the brightest, biggest, most, you know, obnoxious sign possible.
They will maximize, I mean.
They will come back and we will have no longer a leg to stand on.
Yeah. I've gone to court over it. It it happens.
Uh, one other thing that was brought up was, um, the hours that the signs were illuminated, uh, I have in my notes, I recall the applicant saying that the the times that the signs would be illuminated would be only during the business hours that they would be operating, uh, the intent's not for a twenty-four hour illumination. So just, since that came out.
Oh, sure.
Is that, is that a smart for if it gets dark at four?
So.
Is that, that might be in the operations manual.
It must be for seven more, eight more hours.
Do we have copies of that?
I don't have it in the operations.
Yeah.
Operations.
Site lighting.
Right, so each each section under, um, let's see, looking at site-specific information, section three, each area, um, retail area, fast food, has a section for site lighting, residential, uh, site lighting.
So it would, uh, it but but nothing about building lighting, so we need to, we would need to tie tie the the, um,
We, yeah.
signage lighting to to the hours of operation somehow.
Oh, here we go, you know what, under miscellaneous general property?
Yeah.
That is called out separately.
Building signage.
Right. So, I I believe we would need to, just to make sure, I mean, it's implied, I believe, that, um, in the previous sections, the building, the site lighting includes, uh, building signage, but I think we should probably.
So basically, on it.
This is the general problem.
On it does go off to a limited range.
Yeah.
Call building signage.
I think that's currently what's captured. I guess maybe let's focus on the intent. What do we want? It would seem to me that, I mean, my 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 inclination is to say to tie it to the hours of operation with maybe, uh, fifteen minutes or a half an hour on on either end, you know, on the tail end or something like that, um.
Think on the, on the, uh, the beginning too, this is certainly a different time of year, it'd be, you know, pitch dark or, you know.
Yeah, we, I I think we could, um, also make a provision for the intensity after after dark to
To drop.
To maybe drop a little bit.
That would be, and I guess in the case of if the business closes at eight P M. and they want the sign on till ten, they would work on a
Fifty percent.
Reduce fifty percent level or some reduced level.
Right.
I think we'll have to have a whole discussion going through the hours of operation, so I feel that these may be separate questions.
Yeah. I was just trying to figure out if 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 that needs to be captured here, but if we all agree that the appropriate place to capture the hours of building signage lighting is in the operations manual, then we can table. But I but I guess for this conversation now, we can consider the fact that the hours of that the signs will be lit is a mitigating factor that we have to control. Um, the other, uh, two aspects that I would offer just for consideration, one that I believe we've, um, s- discussed, I don't know if it's captured yet, but I my intent certainly is that all signage lighting would be dimmable, which was discussed. Um, just to make sure we capture that, and the other one was the, uh, a question about lit signs specifically facing Parker Street. And I know that was, um, that was an issue raised.
We would prohibit that.
I'm sorry?
Didn't we indicate we were gonna prohibit that?
Uh, I don't know, I can't remember, and and I don't I don't remember seeing.
I think we discussed, and we might, I might even recommend that we, when you think about prohibiting that to a huge point, the few that are facing Parker Street, understanding that on the other side of those buildings, they would have a little bit of signs.
And we know, I believe, uh, from the concept plan, we know that the concept plan includes signage facing Parker Street, so that's a foregone conclusion, but I believe that it's, it is within our, uh, scope to decide whether it's lit or not.
Well, for if you ha- if you're regulating signage facing Parker Street though, all of all of those elevations will be visible from Parker Street,
So.
except for the ones that are internal to the site. So at that point, it sounds like you're going to tell them no internal illumination on those front buildings, because all of them, if you're, if you stand directly in front of the building, yes, it's only that one elevation. Take four steps this way, and you're gonna see the side, which will cast a glow onto the residential across the street. Even if it's a side view, it's still going to cast a glow, if that's what you're looking to regulate.
Well, I mean, you know, we we have to kind of there's a line, we're, we have to draw the line somewhere, right? One way to draw the line is to say no lighting on Parker Street, uh, you can look at it, I mean, I, to me, that seems like, um, I g- I mean, I guess what you're what you're suggesting is that eliminating lighting in those locations doesn't solve the problem that we're trying to mitigate.
Correct.
Because, because there's lighting on the north and south sides that you s- will still see.
All of those signs are tier three signs, correct, that are facing Parker Street, right?
So.
I believe so.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I maybe I'm confused, is there lighting on all four sides of these old partial buildings? I didn't think there was.
I think it's three.
I thought it was.
Lighting or signage?
I'm sorry, signage. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't know that, it was, uh, in the back.
I remember signs indicated on, um, um.
But regardless of what's indicated, what's permitted by zoning for signage on a building, is it all street-facing facade?
I think you have signs on signs on all four sides.
No, it doesn't sound, and and the, and the outline specifically stated that that on the rear, um, it was just going to be strict names, just a name, plates.
Yeah, I believe there was.
Right.
I don't.
If, um.
Maybe.
Concept signs plan, no.
No.
No?
Probably a lot of stuff, but, um.
Well, so we need to dig out the, uh,
Well, I know it was at least two signs, I I saw it, I can remember.
Concept signs. I don't think it's all four signs, I think it's.
No, I I know it's at least, it's at least two, if not three, yeah, but it's definitely not all four, I agree with you on that.
It's two or three. So, well, I guess we'll we'll have to dig it out, but, uh, does that change your, does that impact?
On the internal illumination component?
No, 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 just on, just in the conversation of lighting at all, facing Parker Street.
Facing Parker.
I just don't think that you're going to solve, I I don't think what you stated about about directly facing Parker Street, it does not fully address what your concern is, if your concern is having that light impact, I mean, the abutters that are across the street are the ones that came in and said, look, we don't want channel lit signs, I don't wanna see a red sign glowing in my front yard or in my, you know, in my house. I would prefer, I mean, uh, almost all of them that spoke up wanted reverse channel lit signs, not channel lit, they want a halo lit. And so if you're going to have these glowing red signs, even if they're turned off or coincide with business hours, what if you end up with, um, a a coffee shop that's across the street that opens up at four o'clock in the morning? So you're gonna have this orange or green glow, and even even if you don't have it on Parker Street, you're still gonna get it, you will get a cast from the side. I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for not having anything or having them all, I'm just saying that if you're going to state that it's a it's a light issue, it's a very, I think, a fuzzy place to, it's a very, it's not a very solid ground to stand on when you're still allowing it elsewhere.
I think there's a big difference between direct light, which would be from the sides of these buildings facing, uh, directly facing the houses across Parker Street, as a I think there's a big difference between direct light, which would be from the sides of these buildings facing, uh, directly facing the houses across Parker Street, as opposed to the indirect light, which is not going to be nearly the intensity, uh, of, of those, those directly facing signs. I don't-
Wait, a fresh memory, let's check, what side of the building are the signs going on over here?
Sorry, that's, that's what we need to dig out.
Yeah, I, I don't have it.
There are signs facing Parker, all those.
Uh, there, there, there's signs, I know, on these sides.
I thought they were, I, I thought they were-
Correct.
Over here.
Right. And then they would be on, uh, one of the other sides.
Question, does anyone recall in the main entrance, are the, are, is there halo signs below where, you know, the stone wall is?
Yes.
Yes.
Perhaps this is, you know, a compromise, arguably, it could look consistent if you've got the halo sign at the street level, and then a halo sign on those smaller buildings that front Parker Streets. And I think, you know, it's not, uh, in my mind anyways, you've already got the halo lighting at street level, kind of flow from one to the other.
So you're saying is not prohibit lighting, but only allow halo lighting?
On those, on those front builds to the-
On the out parcels.
Front Parker Streets. I mean, I think that addresses the concerns of people across the street, and, uh, you know, I don't think it would necessarily look that bad, given the fact that there's already halo, there's a halo light at the top of the pylon sign on the street level, it's already there.
Some can be conditioned.
Mm-hmm. So, and just again, for, uh, for everyone's memory, I guess, halo lighting at the top of the pylon sign and then the individual, um, businesses, those are, uh, channel lit. The-
On the pylon sign?
On the-
Yeah, I think they're-
Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong.
They are not channel lit, they're, they're glowing box panels, as far as I know.
So it's just a-
I thought it was just the letters in case it are-
Right, okay, so they're-
Well, the letters, the letters are cut out.
Yeah, the, the panels are opaque, but just the letters, the logos, yeah, it's not the whole, not the whole box sign, yeah.
Not the whole sign, not the box.
Got it, right. Got it, so the, the background will be dark, and there'll be a colored letter shining through for C V S. or whatever, whatever it is.
Apparently, whatever the occupants are.
And that o- that opaque face is colored, um, in daylight, right, it would be red, and at night it would look black with, uh-
We can't really sort of get input from, I mean, I know it's sort of a logical thing to ask, but I think we just have to be careful about-
Got it.
Um, so we could rely on the expertise of the board members or the staff.
I think it would be helpful, Bill, if you could dig out the signage concept plan, I, I, I'm just, or some, somebody, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Just to confirm what we're talking about, I just wanted to, we're talking about consistency on that, uh, on Parker Street, um, so-
Come back to the discussion.
Yeah.
As I recall it from the signage on Parker Street, was that the signage on the back of these stores was never, you know, they're set far enough back in that I don't think drivers are gonna casually notice it. And the pylon is really what serves to, you know, provide information, and the pylon, which is, you know, as we all know, a large, you know, demonstrative sign, it's, you know, clearly visible for however long, and it's a big, bright lighted sign. So, the, people aren't gonna s- you know, be looking for the small sign on the building. The pylon is to educate the driver, so, I mean, we did approve signage on this back, but I don't think those signs are really there for a lot, besides just sort of, I don't know, like, refinding or something.
It's a hundred, they're a hundred and forty feet away from the street, and then there's a whole row of trees that have it, so it's, I, I agree that it's a bigger-
Yeah, so, I, I don't, I don't know what the value of having it lit is.
Alright, I found the, I found it.
Okay. Got it.
So, on those out parcels, there are signs on two, two sides of the building, the side facing Parker Street. Let's see, so pad A.
It's a north.
North. South. North.
And then you want it facing Parker in each case.
Right.
So it's two sides of the building, in all cases, it's facing, there's one sign facing Parker.
And well, I agree with Sam in terms of the, uh, that, you know, this, this would not mitigate all light that would have. Once you're in the sun, having those lighted signs on the sides where they're visible, I mean, helps you navigate, and that makes sense to me, but I just don't see the value in having the lit ones on the small, tier three lit on the back of buildings facing trees and houses.
Well, I, I think that if we're gonna allow it, then we should at least condition the halo lighting facing Parker Street minimally, that's my opinion.
And that, have we closed on the concept of halo, halo lighting in general?
It's four sides. No. No, there's no, not a-
Or not, one way or the other.
Um, let's circo- uh, well, let me, uh, tick through the, the three main issues I see that are unresolved are, um, and we can resolve them, if I'm wrong. The size of the tier three, that was a comment that still hasn't been resolved. The, uh, overall lighting, uh, allowable lighting, and then, uh, the lighting strategy specifically facing Parker Street. We've agreed that, uh, to some degree, the lighting, signage lighting is tied to operations hours, that they're all dimmable. And seems like we are in agreement, or there's no comments, at least at this point, on the size of tiers one and two.
No, no comment.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interject one point? Um, just under the bylaw, they, they can have, they can have signs that are externally lit, so it's just the in, the question for the special permit is, is it whether they can have signs that are lit, but whether they can have internally lit signs. So that might be clear to everyone, but I just wanted to make sure.
So you're saying that by right, they can externally illuminate their signs?
There can, there can be lighting, section, um, six point two point eight of the bylaw, or says illuminated signs shall be subject to the following provision. So, so lighted signs, well, it's, it's in the bylaw, but, um, lighted signs may be illuminated only by steady stationary light. Um, sign illumination is permitted only during those hours in which the associated establishment is associated, is open to the public. In turn, three internally lighted signs are not permitted, all lighting for signs shall be external to the text and the graphics of the sign. So, they, what the board is discussing now is their request was for internally lit signs. The board might find that some of their, some or all of their signs can't be internally illuminate, internally illuminated, but it could still have illuminated signs, um, some illuminated signs that are consistent with the bylaw, that comply with the bylaw.
So you're saying we, we're, we can't actually prohibit lighting of the signs on, by any means?
I, you, you can, you can place, you, you can place conditions on them that are consistent with, with the bylaw. I, I, I would be uncomfortable with you not, not permitting any illumination on any signs anywhere. I, I, I could, um, I could defend signs in one, facing in one direction, not being illuminated, that I could defend.
Just to go back to the second point you cited, within the bylaw, Barbara, around the hours, could you repeat that?
Yeah. Sure. So sign, so number two in section six point two point eight, sign illumination is permitted only during those hours in which the associated establishment is open to the public. So, the applicant, so the applicant's, application for a special permit, I know it was for, it's essentially for a variance from the bylaw, but it's done by special permit. Yeah. Of course, we know the application was for a special permit for internal illumination. I have to look back at their application to see if there were any more details on their request, um, to allow it for hours other than those during which the establishment is open to the public. The board could allow that, um, under the special, under its authority to grant special permit, um-
So if they haven't specifically applied for it, then the, the bylaw dictates the hours, basically?
Well-
Without us having to say anything?
I, I, I suppose you, I suppose you could go, you could grant, you could grant relief that they didn't request, um, certainly, but, um, may, maybe table that for now, and let's look at the application, let's look at the O and M plan.
We can make it more restrictive.
I suppose there's an argument that if it's in the O and M plan, that they would have the lighting extending beyond the hours of operation, that that's in essence part of their application. Um, I'm not gonna get too hung up on that, but I don't think that would be helpful, but just, I just wanted to draw the board's attention to what the bylaw says about illumination of signs.
And if you guys flip to the page that shows the nighttime signage, the bed bath and beyond sign is actually reverse channel lit. It glows from behind.
Yeah, I see that.
Just so you know. That's, that's how it appears to me, because the, the letters themselves are not glowing, there is a glow behind letters.
A white, a white glow.
A white glow.
A white glow behind blue letters, yes.
This, this guy, M C two?
M C two, yeah.
M C two.
Yep.
Well, um, okay, three issues, size, lighting style, and the treatment of Parker Street. Um, start with size. The proposal to bring requirement to thirty-two square feet, that's, that's a sheet of plywood, four by eight, basically that size, so, you know, that looks like maybe four by seven, that community development principles, doesn't look quite, uh, yeah, and I guess in the, in the exhibits-
It's where the Anthony's coal-fired pizza, that's the one I remember, that's the-
Well, uh, I guess what was, right, what's illustrated is the-
Tier three.
Forty-five.
Is the forty-five.
Actually, in that particular one, if I remember correctly, it's thirty-two.
That is thirty-two, it's shown at thirty-two. Why is that?
It's twenty-four.
Because this was before they came up with the sign size, or, yeah, smaller.
Twenty-four. Got it, sorry. Sorry, this is, this is the concept plan, not, not, not Mark's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, this was, yeah, this was before Mark had put the thing together, so-
Sorry, I can't remember, that's, that's actually twenty-four square feet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thirty-two is pretty common for, for commercial and office uses, uh, in my field, at least.
I'm good with it, myself, which, the change, I don't know if anyone else has an opinion.
Reducing it to thirty-five.
I'm good with reducing it to thirty-two.
Oh, thirty-two.
Diane as well.
Mark was, you know, in my, I, I agree, and I believe, you know, Mark was constructing, uh, something based on, you know, the concept design, and, and it was, I don't know that it was, I don't know. I, I feel like it's, um, fairly open for interpretation, obviously, so.
Not to say that Mark didn't contribute significant values.
I think his, his outline was great, yeah, it really helped to, cause it, it was kind of a mammoth feast of how do you do a signage, it's a very helpful-
Oh, yeah, no, the framework makes perfect sense. Yeah, no, it was a very easy thing for us to digest.
Mm-hmm. It's very helpful to put together.
Well, I, I, I just keep picturing in my head, you know, the Kmart enacted, right?
It would not be a Kmart enacted situation, no, no, no.
This big cave with a small sign.
Ridiculously tiny sign.
These are all small storefronts, whereas the Kmart is probably the equivalent of one of the tier one signs, which is like a hundred and fifty square feet. So the sign, the Kmart sign is probably actually, my guess, is six feet tall, it's probably a lot bigger than you would imagine it is, but because it's on such a large, you know, eighties mansard roof, it looks very small. Um, in this particular situation, you have much smaller storefronts for that particular tier, and that's part of why I was, um, I had brought this forward, is because what generally ends up happening is when a company is, is, or a business is going in, they ask for what their sign limitations are, what their sign size is, and if they hear forty-two, or whatever it is,
Right.
then they're gonna go to forty-two, they're gonna go to a sign company and say, make me a sign that's forty-two square feet, figure out how to fit my logo and my name.
No, I agree, I, I, I agree, that's, you know, bigger, better, brighter, um, from the retailer's point of view.
So.
Did Mark, he, so, when, I don't have his materials in front of me, but he gave a specific total square footage that the signage on a particular building, whether it's got tier two and tier three, couldn't exceed, correct?
It's in the back.
The draft, if you look at the draft, it says-
The switchability of the signs.
It's existed E.
And I just wanna make sure, for my clarity, so, the special permit is strictly for internal illumination, but we're expanding the scope of this conversation to include all of signage?
We are.
I just wanted to make sure that that's-
We are, alright, yes, thank you.
That's our intent, okay, okay.
So it's, uh, tier one, one fifty, tier two, ninety, tier three, forty-five, and that's really what's, uh, in question.
But is what, is what you were asking, Bill, is, is there a total, total square footage per building and for the entire project? I think is, there, there was a, like, total signage for-
Kuma?
Right, thank you.
Yeah, so if you have, so if you have three tier three signs, it can't be more than, I'd have to go back and reread one, I have all Mark's materials in my office. Is that my element?
That might have been.
Well, it's, I think the concept is that if a, a space that could be a tier one size store actually gets chopped into three, then, uh, you trade out this tier one sign for three or-
That's the sign quantity, if you go to number one, sign quantity, one sign shall be allocated for each circular sign symbol indicated on the approved signage concept plan for a total of twenty-nine building mounted wall signs of all types, tier one, two, and three.
There you go.
Should we include the supermarket sign as part of that list, or is supermarket not included in the twenty-nine?
The, when you say the supermarket sign, do you mean on the pylon, or do you mean within the development?
Nope, not, the pylon sign is not one that we're talking about, since it was discussed at, uh, uh-
Oh, okay. Uh, hotel meeting.
Right, um, no, I'm talking about wall signage.
Okay.
On the supermarket building.
Right.
I, I'm afraid I don't know what Mark intended, so.
Okay.
It does say, as shown on the signage concept plan.
Because originally, when we had done this, the supermarket was included as tier one.
Yes.
And then as we discussed this, we, we all kind of, um, came to the agreement that the two hundred and fifty square foot max, which was really only needed for the supermarket, was excessive for the other tier one buildings.
So tier one is its own animal.
So we separated out, separated out as to supermarket sign and then tier one, two, three. So, I mean, not that one sign is gonna make a difference, I just, just one, I didn't, I don't know if it needs to be included there.
Just for clarity.
Um, that's certainly an acceptable interpretation of it, um, I, it really depends on what Mark's advice, what Mark's advice was and what the board agreed to, so.
You know, Sam, after re- reading it, I, I, I think I'm confusing Mill and May with this particular project and signage plan, so, I mean, you know, what you're proposing, I think, is reasonable, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like we're going for forty-five to fifteen there.
Right.
So, is, is the supermarket sign that you're talking about, is that in the packet, the retail and residential graphics, final concept design for July eleventh, is it meant in this packet?
Well-
Say that one more time.
I just, I just wanna make sure I know what you guys are talking about, just the, when you refer to the supermarket sign, is that in, is that depicted in this packet, in the July eleventh package?
Yeah. I don't think so. I think that that's-
I don't think so, cause it was all in the original.
It was, it was part, it was approved in conjunction with this, yeah.
Tell me that.
We never really addressed it.
If you add up all the, um, all the circles that, um, sent the paragraph one references, including the supermarket, it's twenty-nine.
I think that's where you got it, yeah.
Okay. So, I think my, my question comes back to then, for what's in parentheses, should supermarket be added in addition to tier one, two, and three? Or do we want to, not that, like I said, not that one sign is going to make a difference, I just didn't know if it needs to be clear that that's included.
I think so, because we broke out supermarket separately after the tiers had been, had been developed, so I think signs of all types, tier one, two, tier three, and supermarket in aggregate.
Okay.
So for this discussion, I originally stated that I wanted to keep the sign the size it was, but, you know, I think it's been a really good discussion, uncomfortable. Bring it down so it stands for both.
Any other comments before we move on to next issue?
I have a question, just for clarity, just wanna make sure, I mean, there's a lot of papers going here. We're owed, one of the things we have to do, um, Mark's exhibit E here, that, that gives the text for the signage, um, applicant owes us a illustration over the, and we have that's part of the, it's a condition, you know, you gotta put the condition out there where the board wants to do it. But, um, that was one agreement we made at the last meeting, there's gonna be an illustration that sort of, um, exhibit E. That's my recollection.
So you're saying we're missing an exhibit?
Something would be, something would be, um, we, we would want something to be illustrated in exhibit E.
Are you talking about the, like, a building, the site plan type thing, where the tier-one, twos, and threes are labeled?
I think that was what we came up with at the last meeting.
Nothing. So, I mean, so exhibit E is essentially, you know, Mark's recommendation, his proposed, it's basically like a proposed condition.
Mm-hmm.
And this proposed condition states, um, the signage will be substantially in accordance with the Mark thirty-two signage plan attached here, too. And I think there's another reference in here to, you know, plan attached here, too. So, we didn't receive one, the board didn't receive one from the applicant. I think the way, one way to handle this is the board can place a condition that requires a signage plan, um, that would conform to this, um, subject to the approval of whatever, whoever you wanna designate, it could be planning department, um, not, to be not and reasonably withheld, cause we can't, the board can't take in any more information, but it could, could condition the permit on receipt of a plan, of an approval plan to go with these conditions.
This was the June sixth of the, here.
Yeah, he, he provided materials in the public hearing, I believe, you know?
Yes.
I think that's, there's no.
No, we, no, no, not for E, not, not, that's not what I was talking about. Exhibit E was the one that we had, um, in our last meeting, we had discussed coming up with some illustrations to, um, go along with the text, that was my understanding.
Some, uh, just so I'm clear, some illustrations to show the, the scale of each of the signs?
Yeah.
Cause we've got placement already.
Yeah, no, it was scale, that's the, the general.
Okay.
So it's not people, I'm sorry, but I thought most of the.
Which, which are those from?
This is just from the other day.
Yeah, no, that was what we explicitly, I mean, I remember us saying that we didn't want anything updated beyond what was submitted there.
That's what I thought, too.
Aside from having, we definitely, I think, need to have that overall site plan that denotes what's one, tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, and then obviously call out supermarket. Um, and that should be attached to exhibit E, but beyond that that was submitted with the application, I don't think that we need any additional materials.
But, but wasn't there.
Please tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I thought maybe that that was discussed, but then the fact that the tenants are shifting, there's no way to, I mean, you could, you could, they could, someone could portray one scenario of a layout of the various types, but, but
Oh, well, you'll never know.
the text is what describes how it.
Oh, you mean of the.
evolves as, you know, slots are filled and.
The site plan? You're talking about, or as a rendering?
I'm saying. I'm just talking about, what I'm hearing is I, is I, I think a desire to have a, in plan, an indication of what signs are what in what location.
Uh-huh.
Because really, in a way, that kind of goes against purpose of this, because what the text is giving us is a, uh, giving the, the applicant a, a way to navigate through as they fill slots and things change and whatever, they're making adjustments. So there is no plan, per se, in the outset.
So then maybe the better way to condition that is that applicant shall provide s, the town planner with an updated site plan reflecting the total number of signs in relation to tiers or something along those lines? So that as it gets utilized, you get an updated plan of, right, of what's built, and then you could still make sure that there are those twenty-nine
Kind of like, yes, but.
Yeah, I, sure.
signs and the forty-nine maximum tier-three signs.
I imagine that, you know, Rick is going to have to kinda keep tabs on this as it comes to fruition, whether it's through a plan that's provided or his own spreadsheet or whatever, but, but, um, is that something that you think is important for the applicant to provide, or?
However, I, I guess the, the bigger issue is, is finding the easiest way to keep track of all of this information.
Do, do you know what I mean? Mm-hmm.
I don't know that that's necessarily on, I, I don't know the best way to do that. So that was my suggestion.
So, I, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Um, we've got the concept signage plan that shows where each of the twenty-nine signs could be located.
Uh-huh.
Are, is the discussion about after the project, after commencement of the project, that, okay, sorry, okay.
Yes. Yes, cause, cause.
If there's, if there's a different number of tenants, if there's different sized tenants than is on the concept plan, then obviously the signage can adhere to that, it has to be.
Well, they can, and they can break them up, so if there's two tier, two tier, two tier-twos, they could break them up into multiple tier-three signs. And when you're trying to manage all of that and keep track of it on a very large project, um, you know, it, it can get complicated, so.
Well. Let, let, let's just talk through first, very quickly, the, the, the process going forward. Um, from Rick's point of view, or, you know, there, there will be, um, I believe, applications for each of these signs
Mm-hmm.
submitted at a certain point when it's determined what they're gonna be. They're gonna have the square footage, a sketch, whatever, and, and Rick is going to determine building, um, commissioner zoning compliance, uh, whether those signs meet the base zoning, and I guess at that time, he would have to
Check.
determine whether it meets this at the same time, and he, it's re, I, I see this as, it's, it's his responsibility
It's an enforcement issue.
to come up with the means and methods for how this is enforced.
Yeah, I mean, the quantity's stated, I mean, you can't go above the quantity, so whether or not they split it up between tier-three, tier-two,
Yeah, it.
um, the quantity is always gonna be capped at a number of signs.
This really exists to turf it to Rick, in a way, so we don't have to define it. It can be dealt with.
So he's just gonna go out and cap.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Um. Any further comments on size? Did we already close that one out? I don't remember.
I think we were.
I think we did. We were getting sucked back.
Sam's recommendation.
Okay. How about, how about, um, I guess we just take on the overall illumination issue. Do we need to discuss this anymore?
When you say illumination, you mean?
Uh.
Method of illumination, sty, style of lighting.
Uh, external or various types of internally illuminated signage?
Well, external, we don't have any.
Yeah, it sounds like we have no limit on that.
Yeah, really. Yeah, it's, it's really just the internal illumination if we want to.
Correct. Correct, if we, if we do nothing, or even if we grant this, they still could choose to do external.
Right.
We can't take that away.
Right. Okay.
Um, so, I've, I've heard, uh, reverse channel lit and channel lit, uh, and box, so can we say, uh, that we wanna exclude the box style of lighting?
Yes.
So we're gonna, we know we're gonna do that.
No flaming letters.
You know, um, you know, if, if we wanna table this issue till we, uh, I mean, I've heard everyone's kinda given input, um, if we wanna table the, you know, actual, we're not voting on this now, we can come back to it.
But, but it got served.
Tabling it?
Except just to avoid having a discussion.
Nothing. It just allows us to move on and not get stalled, you know?
I think we should discuss a little bit, I mean, I mean, the bottom line is either, I mean, everyone's leaning towards one particular type of lighting, so
Okay.
I think we can get there by consensus, uh, after we discuss a little bit. I mean, there's pros and cons to every type of lighting, so, I mean, the main concern of those front lights with, I, I think in my mind, I think at the forefront of everyone's concern are the lights on the signs or in the signs, that front Parker Street. My, my feelings on it again are the fact that they're tier-three signs, so they're the smallest, um, signs allowed. Just reduce them by a few square feet. So, you know, I'm in favor of, you know, qualifying it as halo lit for the front-facing signs. And then, let me see if I did this right, channel lit is not halo, channel lit signs.
Proposed, applicant's proposal, I guess, right.
For the rest of the project. And of course, we still have to discuss, you know, times for, um, dimming them, turning them off.
Just one quick thing to add to that, as you're discussing different elevations. Under the exhibit E, A two, it says wall signs shall be attached to one of the walls. So while the zoning code elsewhere may allow more than one, while the signage plan may say more than one, I, here, it says one. So that's something, I mean, we should probably keep in mind while discussing, if we're, I mean, if we're adopting exhibit E.
Well, I, I think it's a wall sign attached to a building shall be securely affixed to one of the walls. I, it doesn't say a wall sign, a tenant shall only have, or a building shall only have, it's a sign will be attached to a wall.
Right, is that really to prohibit a sign from
Wrapping around.
tying around the corner of a building, I guess, and touching two walls?
Right.
Which I really wouldn't have a problem with.
Or being somebody freestanding or hanging.
I mean, if you have a, if somebody wants to do a banner sign on the corner, um, for like a restaurant, that's effectively kind of prohibiting that, because it's technically attached to two walls.
Here.
I think it's poorly, I think it's poor English.
You could just strike the sentence.
It specifically calls one parentheses one. It's not, you know, they go, he goes out of his way.
I, I think he, I think he.
It's specific, but not science.
I think the intent there was, as opposed to none, um.
Like hanging or.
Yeah, like a hanging's on, at least one wall.
How about we just say at least one?
I, I, again, I don't know what Mark intended, and I think this is really up to the board.
Phrasing is ambiguous.
Yeah, it's up, I, I don't wanna speak for Mark, cause I just don't know, so I think whatever, you know, reasonable, um, being wording of this the board wants to make is fine, as long as it's, you know, still consistent with the bylaw, or the board sort of makes clear what it's approving that varies from the bylaw.
I think it's adding context to the, to the next sentence. Securally attached to a wall, not on the roof, not above the top of the wall.
I think it's, I think you're right, I think it's just badly worded.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we could work with that.
I mean, you could just, you could just strike it. It's not going to.
It doesn't tell you anything.
No, it doesn't add to the next sentence, the next sentence is very clear, shall not be located on the roof. In the case of a parallel sign, it has to, it can't project more than twelve inches, which is what I was talking about, blade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, I mean, if nobody has issue with a, with it being attached to the parapet, that's fine.
Well, what about a, so how about a hanging sign?
You're talking about like a hanging downside?
Right.
Um, that would be, you, you have a, you have a bracket that's attached to one wall, and then it hangs, it would
Right, I mean, would.
be covered under what's proposed.
Would, okay, so that first sentence wouldn't preclude that, then?
Well, it says it.
Not necessarily.
It says it shall not project, uh.
More the twelve inches.
In the question.
So you can have a darrow hanging sign.
Yeah. Well, no, that's.
Well, it says, in the case of a sign parallel to the wall, so that's only in that case.
Right.
I don't know that anyone.
It'd be perpendicular to the wall?
I mean, I, I just think we should carry it in to the first sentence, you know, affixed to at least one of the walls of the building.
Yeah.
At least one of the walls.
So you wanna keep it or get rid of it?
I'm in favor of keeping it, just.
That's fine. Affixed to at least one of the walls of the building.
Right, so we're adding at least before one of the walls.
So it's okay for a wraparound sign, that's what we're saying?
Yeah, I don't really issue that.
Um, okay, back to lighting style, lighting, uh, technique here. I, I mean, I.
Where are you? Maybe everyone else has mentioned, but they're thinking.
Me, you're talking to. Yeah. I, I'm, I, I think I'm comfortable with basically what William, um, outlined, which would be, uh, the halo on Parker Street and the right, you know, the proposed lighting on the, the rest of the project, uh, you know, given, assuming dimmable, uh, you know, and the, the operations hours.
So would we need to then define a process by which dimming the signs would be addressed?
Well, there, it's in the O and M manual already, as far as.
No, no, i- if, if in fact, say, just, not the timing,
The, there's a complaint.
but the level of light, if indeed, you know, in a butter or someone else felt like, you know, this is just too bright, how that question is addressed. Not, you know, it should go off at nine-thirty or ten-thirty or whatever, just.
Well, I mean, that's a difficult proposition to commit to every conceivable future complaint, um, at this level.
No, it should, I'm not saying we have to, you know, figure out every complaint, but merely state that there's some sort of process.
Where would that be?
I don't know.
Well, there's already, I mean, you, you mean as far as the complaint would be concerned, or how we measure the light that's being emitted from any particular sign?
It might be, it might comprise both of those things. I just think if, if, if the inclination is to go with lighting that, of the types we're considering is perhaps the most imitative, that we should think about how, and, and if it matters to us if it's dimmable, then there should be some process by which dimming is achieved, should it be necessary.
Well, there's a process that was discussed, I don't know exactly where it falls, but for the site lighting, to address, um, issues with the site lighting. Um, so I imagine it should be related to that in some way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whether it's, uh, you know, uh, directly to the op, you know, the, the, um, the operators of the property, or, I, I, I don't know, I, I mean.
So, Mr. Chairman, what you're suggesting is making the sign lighting subject to the same review as the parking lot lighting, is that, is that?
Basically, yes.
So, I mean, subject to.
I think that's in the O and M as well.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can we just go back a moment ago, so we, we have so far no box-style lighting, and I have halo on Parker Street,
Yeah, go.
meaning the signs facing Parker Street.
Reverse channel.
So, I guess I.
That's, that's what we've discussed.
It's just the, it's just the three pad buildings.
Okay, I think other than Parker Street, what, what is the board, what style is the board moving?
That's, we're kinda, we're kinda doing a, I mean, I, we, I think I was the last one.
Oh, you're still discussing.
I'm not thrilled with channel lit, um, on the other buildings.
So am I.
Um, i- in my professional opinion, that's what I was expressing earlier, in my non-professional opinion, I think that they look cheap. Um, just as other applicants or, um, the abutters had noted, I, I just don't think they're going to add to the character of, of the, the development. I mean, I know that they existed, and it was a, a long discussion as to whether or not they were actually approved by Town Hall, and I think there was good reason for it to be a discussion in and of its own. Um, it's, it's just not a, it's not a great type of signage, in my opinion, it just, it tends to look very commercial, it tends to look very cheap, and it looks very big box. It, and that's an aesthetic personal wording of, um, uh, similar to my professional opinion, I just, I don't think that it's something that's appropriate.
I would, just to follow up, as the other person descended from the, the majority opinion here, um, I agree with Sam, although that's not. I agree with Sam, although that's not my necessary, my rationale. My rationale would be that, once you're in the site, attracted by knowledge of the site, pylon sign, et cetera, et cetera, you're not trying to identify, I mean, it's not like it's going to be hard to tell which stores are which. The halo lit signs are perfectly legible. So I'm not sure what bonus you get from having the other, from having the channel lit signs, but what you do get for sure is more light in folks' living rooms, or more visibility from people's houses. But I don't think you get anything for that.
I don't know if that part is true, Andrew, is because with the light emitting, I, I think the presentation that we saw about the light pollution, I think it's a little more controlled in the other style, which we, um, channel it. I completely understand about aesthetics, you know, it's kind of opinion and taste, but just with the light pollution and kind of what's going into people's homes, I think this is a little bit less controlled than, um, it's the channel it.
And I, I just think the channel it is a little crisper looking at night, and I, I mean, we are going to condition it-
Right, crisper, so, so that the people walking through the woods might notice, I mean, it's, what are you trying to get, is my point?
We're trying, I, I, in my mind, a consistent look throughout, um, and you, we already have the Market Thirty Two or the supermarket, with channel lit.
They actually have big box.
Tier one, big sign. The fact that we can dim the lights, condition it, um, with hours of operation, or tie it into some other, timing that we decide, I, I think it gives us a lot of flexibility. I, I don't think, given they're dimmable, they're going to be off perhaps when the businesses close, we can have them come on, um, at a particular time. I don't think the, the pollution in and of itself, the, the light bleeding through into the residential areas is going to be as bad as, as, as people might have thought during this process.
And all of the signs that we're talking about right now are facing internal to the property? None are, none are facing any residences?
Well, eventually they are. Well, so, I think we also, sorry, one last point, just, and it's not consistent with prior decisions of the board. Which I think is another question that needs to be at least thought of for a moment.
It will come up in the future.
Mill and Main.
We will be setting a precedent, and future applicants, no matter how many times you tell them, every application is, is looked on its own.
We do this now, every building in town, every new commercial building in town is going to have this lighting.
Or at least request it.
Well, so, my end, I don't know if we're going to make any progress, any more progress, uh, I guess. We, it seems to me that there's, there's two, that we're looking to approve one of two versions of this special permit. One with the halo and one with the channel lit. And, um, I mean, at, at a certain point, I guess it's just, we vote on it. And this, you know, these are, these are, these all require four, fouriers, just, just a reminder. So, um, and I guess tied to that, I guess, there'd be some details related to, um, how we treat the Parker Street. Can we, can we agree that we have consensus on, um, the halo style lighting on the Parker Street elevation?
Sure.
Okay, so that would be consistent in, you know, either version of this, um, special permit that we would look to approve.
Well, I, I also, just one more point on the channel lit letters, too. I mean, setting a precedent, I, I don't think we're necessarily setting a precedent for this particular project or other future commercial developments. I mean, the location, the sighting of the buildings, the way that the signs are facing is unique to this particular concept. So if you have, let's say, for instance, someone putting up another commercial building on Main Street, just some, some way, shape, or form, or it's not necessarily going to be a budding, a residential area, um, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head if there's any other areas in Maynard that, you know, might crop up in the future that would argue for this particular type of lighting. I, I think Mill and Main, it's over and done with, we, they've got what they have, and I, I don't see them coming back to argue that they want to replace their signage with, uh, channel lit letters. But, um, you know, I, I, I do see your concern, I have seen it in my own professional career. You know, with, with monkey see, monkey do type of thing. But, um, I, I, I think, given the uniqueness of this site to the town, I, I don't see that as a, as a problem going, if you, you go, going forward with future commercial developments. If any.
I propose that we move on. I think we've set our pace. My understanding now is that we've made our way through all, unless anyone, any had their comments, I guess, probably we've killed it pretty much dead. We'll, we'll move past this document, and my proposal is that we jump right to the operations manual, which I, I see as the next-
Do you still have mine?
Major, I, I think I put it back.
Oh, sorry.
Can I just ask a quick question for-
Yes, please.
Special counsel, town council?
She's too busy. Do you think you are?
Is that a question? Do we have the ability to condition a by right use?
To, to, conditions? Oh, yes, you can impose, you can impose conditions on these, on-
On a by right use?
On, as, as part of site plan review, as part of these special permits.
I just wanted to-
It can't be, I mean, it can't be a reasonable condition.
Right, understandable.
But you can, but you can impose conditions.
Understandable, okay.
So, um, I'm sorry, if I, do you mind if I just kind of, I don't have my own copy of this.
Phil, can we get some extra copies of the O and M manual?
Do, do you have any just sitting there? Sorry, I don't have my own. All right, I just, specifically focused on really the section three site-specific information.
Hours.
It's really, I mean-
Wayne, we could probably just get photocopies of the first couple of pages, the, the-
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need the whole thing, it's just pages two, three, two, three, and, yeah, two and three, really, thank you, thank you. So,
Let me just pause for a moment, Will's-
Yeah, yeah.
Can we just take a, how about we just take like a three minute bathroom recess?
Let's just take a five minute recess.
Very good. Three minute recess.
I'm going out to the swings. I said, I'm going out to the swings. Thanks, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Hannah Brown.
I have one, too. Sorry, I wasn't gonna- Those minutes are strong, I probably should have only had one at the time.
Yeah, sure.
My breath is exceedingly fresh now, though.
Exceedingly?
Exceedingly.
Did you get too many?
I got two.
And two was too many?
Two was too many, from, from my delicate constitution.
I didn't know you had a delicate constitution.
We all do.
I think it smells like coconut. Arti tuna.
Very petty.
You're making me hungry.
Unintentional, that I ate for dinner. Arti tuna that I've been eating coconut eggs.
Just Benito chips.
I don't know, what are the other chips?
We'll kick into that.
It's kombu, like, it's like, like, solvent tuna.
Fish, fishy, uh, put on eggs, but, um, you know, salad.
It adds a lot of umami to it.
All right, we're back.
Yes, back, baby.
So really looking primarily at section three of the operations manual to begin with, that you can comment on whatever you want later, but let's just focus on this first, um,
Just go through my sections?
Yeah, sure, retail area, fast food, hours of operation. Seven AM to eleven, we have a health club, uh, requesting twenty-four hour operation. Saturday and Sunday, seven to eleven. It's the same as the others. Site lighting, so my recollection of site lighting is, this, these are the parking lot, site lighting in the immediate adjacent vicinity of these uses, because we have retail kind of around the edge, down the middle. Well, restaurant, well, I don't know, fast food, I guess, is different from restaurant. At least in this, uh, chart. Residential area, maybe, uh, if we, let's knock off the residential area first, that's kind of discreet, maybe.
Could we go through it just by section?
Well, my, my confusion, I guess, is that it seems that retail, restaurant, and grocery are somewhat related, whereas residential, in my view, is an easy one that we should be able to just knock out.
I just figured if we put some definitions, it might help each successive area. But, up to you.
How, uh, how so?
I don't know. But I'd like to, I mean, I just feel like we keep passing things, so.
I'm not, uh, well-
Sure, let's do residential first.
Let, let's just do it and knock it off.
Okay.
So, my understanding of hours of operations is that this is the office. Obviously not people's houses, but the, the, the office.
Shut down at six.
Nine to six, nine to six, eleven to five. I've got no problems with this. Any, any issues, concerns?
No.
Shouldn't note that they're, no, never mind, just kidding.
Okay. So, um, I, and I think in our bylaw, we have a, um, two definitions, one for fast food and one for restaurant, they're defined differently. So that's why we, we've got them broken out. Seven to eleven, restaurants, eight to midnight.
Restaurant seems to imply liquor permit, uh, just if you look at site lighting.
Yeah.
So it's off, it liquor permit required time.
There's a liquor component.
I think fast food is, is no table service, server.
Got it.
At least that's what it is.
Makes sense.
Does the board want the definition, fast food or fast food?
I mean,
I think we're happy with the definition.
I'm, I'm just, I just want to make sure that it's warranted, that they're broken out, I guess. Um, as far as the actual hours go, seven to eleven. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm fine with the retail, fast food. And then delivery hours, seven AM to seven PM, so that's, you know, during the day.
Lighting?
Lighting on a dusk dim to fifty percent at eleven thirty PM. Security lighting only from one AM through dawn.
My question, Sam, is what's the value of fifty percent lighting from eleven thirty to one?
If we're closed at eleven.
To give the employees, I guess, time to-
And I think what Barbara was indicating before was that, or maybe this was just directly the building signage lighting, but there, um, okay.
That signage that you talked about.
So you're talking about signage, sorry. So for site lighting, the question then is, why is it still on at fifty percent until one AM?
Eleven thirty to one, if they close at eleven.
I think it's for people who are cleaning up and closing, you're going to have people that are walking filthy, disgusting, you know, things of trash out to, for fast food restaurants, what is, that they have to walk them out to dumpsters. Um, you want to make sure that there's ample lighting for those people after hours, I mean, you can work at a fast food restaurant at sixteen.
But you don't think security lighting would be?
Generally not, no, security lighting is very minimal.
That's just at doors, right, and that doesn't get people to their cars, or to the dumpster, or whatever.
I don't, I think that there's still some site lighting per security, but I think it's really minimal, it's not all, it, it was on the plan that it showed which, which lights would be on, it's not all of the streetlights. So if your, if your car isn't out front, you might not have lighting to get to your car, not that you couldn't.
Wasn't the security lighting subject to police chief's review at any event?
Yes, condition fifty-four, six months after the first issuance.
They could come back and say that it needs to be brighter, or what light needs to be put on, or you turn off these lights, so.
Right, but I'm just, you know, considering like, you know, relatively full site lighting till one AM.
But it will, it's-
Fifty percent, fifty percent.
Right, but it's still every light.
So, if, if we were to say hypothetically, change that to twenty-five percent, or change it to zero percent, that would still be subject to the police chief's review at some point, right?
Well, so, condition fifty-four says, um, the applicant shall consult with the chief of police to review the adequacy of the site security lighting, which seems very, very specific, so I don't know if we maybe need to broaden that, um-
Delete security in that sentence, just site lighting in general?
Yeah.
Well, but then the police are never going to consider anything except-
Well, so, uh, but one of the things that we've talked about-
If you only have is a hammer, the whole world's a nail.
Right, but, but one of the things we talked about, um, in one of our prior meetings was uh, conditioning the site plan approval on the planning board retaining jurisdiction over added, adjusting lighting for a specific period. This is specific just to the site security lighting and the police chief review, but we could broaden that to overall site lighting, planning board review.
You could say add a maximum of fifty percent to, and subject to the review of planning board. So then, maybe we find out that thirty percent is the better number.
Well, too, I mean, once the site is, the amount of light that's going to be emitted is going to vary during the different stages, you know. Once they go through phase one, build X number of buildings, all the way through to the completed construction, you know, vary. Light being emitted. So perhaps qualifying it on, you know, once the site is completed, in its entirety, having a final review of the lighting.
The only challenge there would be that, like, say one of the pads doesn't get built for ten years.
I think by phases, maybe might be helpful, because then you'd associate it with different areas, because-
But again, then, phase four might never be completed.
Then, true. Or building sales, I don't-
I'm very conscious that you look at these times, and there's very few hours
Of darkness.
Where this is not like a well-lit giant site.
Uh, what if it was review six months after obtaining CO?
For each, for each building?
I don't know the best ways to define that, I'm trying to help find a structure for a condition. If you want each building, sure, but-
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm asking, I was just clarifying here.
Well, this is broken up by, you know, use, I guess, right? The retail area, I guess, would be, is being treated, you know, together.
Like, the retail is pretty, well- Like, the retail is pretty, well, it seems to be retail, fast food, and restaurant. You know, how do you distinguish which are which? I mean, the health club, sure, but we're, you know, each pad, not knowing the tenant, could fall into restaurant, could fall into retail.
We could tie it to the site plan and discuss buildings when, you know, that it's, it's review upon that particular building or parking lot area completion. Because whenever that, that main big parking lot gets built.
Right, the lights on the buildings won't really matter, you're right.
Right, and the stuff you're gonna be looking at is the parking lot, really. And how those, that parking lot relates to that use area, or out parcel relates to that use.
So there's two components, one is ensuring that there's some review process with times tied to phases, maybe. And then there's, what do we prescribe from the outset? Right, this is fifty percent from eleven thirty to one is the proposal from day one, and then, yes, I agree there should be a review at a certain period, after a certain period of time, but, um, you know, I don't know, can you, could you help us, like, how much, how much realistically can we, can we, uh, change this down the road? Is it realistic to retain control over this?
Um, I think you can retain some administrative control, I would be kind of uncomfortable making them come back in and have a whole new public hearing on a change to the permit. I wouldn't make it so that it's like a modification to the permit. I think it can be delegated to a staff member, um, for approval, um, so it's really not sort of administrative, and that approval can't be unreasonably withheld, so you could, you know, delegate that to planner, to engineer, to building commissioner, um, to any of those, I think that's, that's where the farthest the board could go to, to have it re- revisited. But I think to the extent possible, the board should really decide what it thinks is acceptable, um, and appropriate for the project and put that in the permit. I, uh, it, I think if that's harder to do, but that would be a better path, um.
I'd prefer myself to give it to Rick or Bill or Wayne than to see it again here.
To revisit it at some interval, I mean, do you want?
Mr. Chairman, just, you guys seem like you're struggling, and rightfully so, with the question of this, to Andrew's point, I think it was, uh, the site is lit most of the time, right? I mean, you guys have the ability to, to recommend or consider change in these things, and let's just, let's just talk about that for a second, right? So, the hours of operation, seven AM till eleven PM, right? So, what's to say that we can't, um, we can't require that the lights go to fifty percent right at eleven o'clock? That still means the whole site's gonna be lit, people can still find their way to their cars, maybe it stays at fifty percent from eleven to twelve, and security goes on, security light goes on from midnight to dawn. Maybe that's more reasonable and conducive with people's lifestyles of midnight. It, it does seem, I don't understand, and I know we can't get input from the applicant on this, but I don't understand the operations exactly, but it seems to be, you know, an hour and a half for someone to walk out of a building after it's closed seems excessive. So maybe it could be.
When you're working in fast food, it's like two hours to clean up.
Yes, that, that's fine.
So, that's, I think that's part of it.
And anything that we condition here could be overruled by the police chief, right?
Absolutely.
In terms of security.
Right, if he feels it's not well, well, it's not lit enough for safety, he could require changes.
He, he, remember, one of the conditions is that the, um, for site lighting, the police chief's gonna, um, revisit it in a year anyway.
Well, that was, I guess, one of the concerns. One of the concerns is that it does, the proposed condition does say site security lighting.
But the police aren't gonna ever review it for any other reason.
Right, but I guess if, you know, and I would suggest that we strike the word security, and, and then they have, because if they have the authority to review all the lighting, I mean, then they will.
They're only gonna do it from the perspective of, is it safe, crime?
Right.
Right.
They're not gonna do it on any other concept.
Looking at lighting as a whole on site.
The police might be like, we think all the lights should be on a hundred and fifty percent twenty-four hours a day, because that's the safest.
Well.
So do you want to distinguish, I mean, it was a good time to distinguish between what security lighting is and what site lighting is? I was just asking town engineer to explain that to me, to me, so I don't know if that would be useful.
If you guys remember the, the exhibits that were both, that were pinned and displayed to the board, they showed the overall photometrics for the site, and then they had, uh, a security lighting, which was only portions of those luminaires, uh, exterior elevated luminaires that were lit, and a few of the building lights that were lit, just for security purposes. And they were, and they seemed pretty reasonable, there was only a few of them on the site, and it was mainly down the spine road and at, at the access, uh, access roads going off in this direction.
And at the time, I remember asking the same question, like, if that's enough to provide security, then why is so much more needed from eleven thirty to one? Because either it's not safe after one, or it would be safe earlier than one, right? It seems to me that there's no, it's not like at one o'clock magically everything's much more, you know, safe, and therefore the lighting can be lowered.
And some, another comment, just to not get hung up on, um, you know, we talked about fast food, that's probably like the one that's gonna be open the latest, right? The health club, we understand twenty-four hours, so that's gonna have to stay lit, and we understand that's way in the right corner, so that should be less, less concerning anyhow. Uh, but we're talking maybe like two fast food restaurants yet, so we have to put it in perspective. If this ends up, I'm not, I can't recall, but just looking at the graphic, it doesn't look like too many buildings are gonna fall in a category anyhow.
But this is all retail as well.
So they, uh.
No, I'm sorry, I, I should have finished my thought, Andy. So to Sam's point, you know, close up, it takes two hours, right? But you're not, if you're in a Kohl's, it doesn't take two hours to shut the lights off and walk out the door. Fast food, I agree.
Well, but, so you're, you're gonna have at least an hour where they're gonna have to close, they have to take their registers back, they're gonna have to check all the store, they're gonna have to make sure nobody's camping out in a dressing room. I mean, there's, there's all these different closing things that you have to go through in a protocol.
Mm-hmm.
So I can, I can understand the fifty percent lighting, um, but I think that going to fifty percent, as Wayne mentioned, at right at close of business, would most likely, in most cases, be fine. It might make you feel awkward walking out of a store to a less lit parking lot, but chances are you're probably not gonna know that it's a little bit, not quite as bright as it would have been when you walked in the store, because you've been inside. Um, and we can also condition that it goes to fifty percent at eleven PM, and then revisit that, like you said, in six months. And we can always follow up and see if that's working, if it's not working, and, and if it's not, then, um, I don't know, you know, to talk about how to adjust that.
But the re, if I may, the revisiting really can't be sort of coming back before the board for a modification, it really has to be delegated, that's what would be delegated.
Even if we stipulated it was a minor modification?
I, I, I did not really.
Okay, just asking.
So, I've heard a couple, go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, just to play devil's advocate, suppose we don't change anything that's here, we go fifty percent at eleven thirty, security lighting only from one AM to dawn. In the event that there's a complaint from the neighbor, can they contact building zoning, how would that exactly administrate it?
Residential.
Yeah, that's what they would call it, contact the building commissioner first.
Um, I'm, I'm just thinking, working in that sort of.
Now it happens.
Yeah.
And then they'd have to look at it with the police and so forth, and they'd probably talk to the, the owner and the tenants and say, you know, do these lights need to be, maybe it's determined, to your point, maybe it's determined that it doesn't need to be on that long, for maybe a good portion of the site, maybe it can be adjusted. But that would probably, that would be the process.
And I, I recall a lot of conversation around this specific topic, and how each individual light everywhere throughout the property is, you have the ability to adjust the, the intensity.
I just think if we get into the minutia of trying to revisit this or delegate the authority to someone at this phase, it's gonna be awfully hard to just come up with some, A, language, and B, implement that language down the road. Um, you know, I think from an enforcement provision, or if there's a complaint, I mean, it's, there is a procedure in place, and given the fact that every single light bulb on the site is dimmable, um, I'm sure, which we're thinking, but confident that between an agreed-to-butter and the developer and the town, something could work out without a necessary, I think it was spelled out.
I, I, respectfully, I, I think if the board, I, I think you do have to have something in the permit that says so, I wouldn't, I'd agree, that's, ideally, that would be the case, but I think if the board wants to make it enforceable, and the board wants to know that there is some, will be some process by which this is revisited, that it's, that it, that it's delegated to one of the town, to the staff or officials, that, 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 that will need to be a condition in here. I don't, I think if you leave it out, they'll have this, they'll, they'll have this, and this will be, this will be what their permit allows.
Would that, I mean, that applies broadly, not just to lighting, right?
Right, but this, I mean, I'm just addressing the section that.
Sure, but I guess what I'm getting at is that shouldn't we have a condition that kind of delegates that globally for the.
For all conditions?
I would think that, I mean, you talk about with the, without, with the end of the operations manual, or just in general?
Just raising the, you know, I agree with you that we should specifically call it out, that's what you're saying, but I'm just wondering if it's broad, broadly, you know, related to all oper, all the details of the operations.
It, I, I mean, I think, I think the board should decide how, you know, within the limits of its authority, how it wants this project to work and to operate, um, and I, I just, I would not feel comfortable if, I would not feel comfortable with a decision that leaves till later and allows, and, and would let the board impose essentially new conditions later, um, I, I just, I'm not sure that's defensible.
What I'm, what I'm, what I guess what I'm suggesting is that, in addition to specifying all of those details that we're talking about, that we also have an additional condition that discusses.
Revisiting?
Not revisiting, no, delegating the, um, the revisiting of these conditions, uh, to town staff, and the process for, for doing so.
All conditions?
I'll think about.
Well, I'm, I'm talking, I'm, no, I'm, well, what I, what I meant to say was, uh, the details of this operations chart, that's what I said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not all conditions, no. We first started talking about saying, okay, let's craft a way for lighting to be revisited, and it could just be lighting, right? Maybe that's the appropriate way to go. But what I was thinking was that it seems like there should be a process outlined.
For the.
For more than just lighting, to be.
For updating the.
Yes.
Okay, I'll see.
For, for the, for town staff to collect input from the public and instigate some kind of process to adjust some of these details.
So if people are complaining about the content of this operations manual that we, you know, approve potentially, how does town, how does the town deal with that? And I guess I would just ask, you know, how does the town deal with, how would we deal with other things that go on in town? And I mean, that, you know, these decisions are not going to be popular with everyone, um, but you're asking if there's something that we really kind of got wrong, how is it kind of, um, fixed? Is that kind of what I'm saying?
Well, that came up in the context of lighting, right? And I think everyone seemed to be open to that idea for lighting. If we wanna keep it just with lighting, that's fine.
Well, what about, well, I think we should keep it with lighting in general, I think there are like, maybe there are mechanisms in place for other, other, um, aspects of this, if people really have something to say, I, I mean, I don't wanna make the door open for, you know, the door open perpetually for people to come forward and, and, you know, make constant complaints against the site. Um, I think we should focus on the lighting, and, you know, one thought that I've had, that I have in, in my mind is perhaps, delegating the authority to Bill, Wayne, whomever, you know, at, at certain occupancy points, so if they complete twenty-five percent of the, and occupy twenty-five percent retail space, if necessary, the lighting plan can be revisited, and again at fifty percent, and again at seventy-five, a hundred percent, something along those lines, and we graduate it if necessary. Not necess, you know, not come before the board, but the town could come and say, you know what, we need to do these lights at, um, eleven o'clock, I said eleven thirty.
I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can think of.
Just, and I'll defer to town council on this, how about some type of a condition that, um, allows town staff, and we leave it vague, right? Because it could be the building commissioner, it could be Bill, it could be myself, it could be DPW, it could be the town administrator, depending on how frustrated an issue it is, right? That allows town staff to, um, work with the, the owner regarding operational complaints or operational issues that develop over the, over the first year or two of, however we wanna phrase it, of operation. That could relate to lighting, it could relate to traffic, all the things that the, the residents have been talking about. It, it, it may be good to leave that open, to let town staff work with these guys if something comes up. Maybe we can find a way to solve that specific issue without them having to modify their operations too much, but satisfy the people's complaints, and without them having to come back to the board.
And, um.
I didn't phrase that, but that's.
No, it makes sense. You know, Bill's referring to condition fifty-four, which says, six months after the first issuance, and you're typically at occupancy, the applicant shall consult with the police, chief of police to review the adequacy to site security lighting, and thereafter, the applicant should report to the planning board to review the adequacy of lighting, or noting any inadequacies, and draw recommendations from the chief of police, and I think what Bill suggested was we could sort of expand the scope of that to include some of these operational issues. Um, I think you can't delegate, the board can't delegate its authority entirely, but at the same time, I'm uncomfortable, I'd be uncomfortable with making the applicant come back for a modification, sort of every time there is some call to tinker with what the board approves. So I think maybe while the board's discussing other issues, I'll see if I can come up with some language that, um, would sort of strike a balance between, between those two.
The reason I kind of lumped it together with like operational issues, uh, let's equate it to like a smaller site development, and with, there's like a dumpster at the back corner of this lot, and it's up against some guy's house. And just for, for some reason, this specific, specific site, it's on Harvey's route to pick this dumpster up at four thirty AM. Well, they shouldn't, if that's a complaint, they don't have to come back to the board, they'd be calling the building commissioner or town and say, hey, you guys gotta talk to these people, we gotta work something else, and we would go talk, and then we would say, you can't be picking it up this early, and we'd come up with some solution that's amenable to everybody. And I know that's a simplistic, but I'm just trying to explain it in simplistic. Maybe apply it the same way.
Yeah, it's just that there's two different, um, it's just, so there's two different possibilities that the, that the conditions, you know, that the hours of operation, all the operational issues here, that they might turn out to be too stringent, in which case the application, the applicant, I think, would, the applicant would come back before the board and ask for, um, you know, for a modification, that I can envision. Then there's sort of the other side of it, which is not stringent enough in terms of protecting the neighborhood, and that's, I think that's the area we're talking about, right?
So I.
Yes.
I, I think what we could potentially, potentially do is if there's a way that we can phrase that if the hours, if, if we're comfortable with the hours as proposed, and we could move, you know, accept as proposed, and then say if, the, find some way to say if they're, um, if they decide, how can I phrase this? Generally, it's like when you're doing something that is, if they decide to, uh, turn them down earlier than they have proposed, it's kind of. Do you, I can't think of the word. But it, it's becoming more restrictive, if it's becoming less restrictive, then it's gonna have to come back.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't know how to phrase that.
Yeah, that, I mean, I think that.
For this, at least.
Right, I think that is what I'm saying, right? If they, if they want, if they want anything that would have a greater impact, more light, longer hours of illumination, that they have to come back for. But I think, I, I would encourage the board, though, to really, you know, decide on as much as it can. I mean, decide whether I can live with this, or whether it, it wants to modify it. I, I, the availability, I know it's easy for me to say, because I'm over here, but the availability of revisit, that, of a process to revisit some of these specifics. but the availability of revisit, of a process to revisit some of these specifics should not, um, sort of deter the board from really looking at this and deciding whether it's acceptable or how it needs to be changed. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we should punt.
Exactly, thank you. So I would, my, ideally, I would like to see the board sort of decide whether it is acceptable and if not, how it should be modified. Bill and I take notes on it. That's what we'll go into a condition if the board approves the permit. And I'll come up with some sort of language that says, you know, that talks about, um, sort of administrative review we're talking about.
Okay, so there's a yet to be defined modification process that will, that is, will be limited in some way. So we, we do need to, we need to scrutinize this closely now.
I think so, I really, I think that's important. Please don't punt on it to the least possible.
So, you know, that said, I've heard one concern about, um, you know, an hour and a half of fifty percent lighting. Does anyone else have actually concerns about what's proposed? I'm talking about site lighting.
Site lighting.
Fast food.
Holistically or just for the one item?
Site lighting hours for, for retail, for, for restaurant and retail.
Same.
They're basically the same. Off at liquor permit required time, I guess, which is hopefully one A M, maybe twelve thirty. Now, I suppose that if, if a retail business were to close at nine or ten, then that site lighting would stay on at one hundred percent until eleven thirty, and then only at fifty percent from eleven thirty to. So there's no, I mean, retail's allowed to be open till eleven, but I mean, I imagine there'll be some stores that will close at nine thirty or ten probably, so. But it'll be a mixed bag. It's lumped in with fast food, so, um, other concerns? I, I'm troubled by the retail being lumped in with fast food personally because I see the fast food being open till eleven and the retail being closed at nine, maybe, or, or so. They're kind of in different areas, sorry?
Even earlier, depending.
Even earlier, I mean, I guess the fast food could be in the pads, it could be in the strips as well, so. The, the site lighting is intended to serve these pretty broad areas, so I don't know if it's possible to get more surgical than, than this.
If you're concerned about the, you're concerned about like the retail, like the retail would close earlier, but the light would stay on for, you say, or until closing?
Well, and some fast food places may end up opening earlier. I mean, that's, I, I feel very confused by this because if they end up having like a, some sort of coffee or breakfasty place, they're going to open before seven, or they're going to want to open before seven, I mean.
Right, so, so if you look at the.
Or Starbucks, which opens at five.
If you look at the grocery store, the language there for the grocery store.
Right, it includes a Starbucks.
Uh, on at dusk, dim to blah, 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 until five A M. And then on, all on from five A M until dawn. So that covers that because it's more known what the grocery store hours are going to be. So you're saying if there's a fast food that opens at five A M, this won't allow them to have any lighting?
Well, no, it won't allow them to operate. They pigeonhole themselves by listing hours of operation as seven A M to eleven. Four is otherwise permitted, which would be permitted to us.
You're right, the hours of operation are, are at seven.
I mean, I don't have an issue extending, I mean, it, it just, it gets really fuzzy when you're, you're playing with all of this. But, I mean, I, I agree, I think fast food should be broken out. I mean, fast food could be open, most of those places close around nine P M or so. And there are, there's like, what is it, Wendy's or something that was doing the something till late, um, menu, but.
Even that was till eleven, I guess.
Okay, I don't, I don't really eat there, but, um, I, I know that they have a much wider span than what's listed. We have the opportunity to break them out. It just, one of my concerns with all of this is just, this is so explicit and very limiting as they have written it. And I know that they've written it this way, but if they decide that they want to change this, I think that would be helpful to have that, a good, a clear understanding of what that modification process is going to entail.
Um, if they want to, if, if this is approved by the board and if they decide they want to have a, you know, they have a client or a tenant that wants to open earlier, um, then they could come back for a modification of the special permit. That would be the process for altering those hours.
Of the special part, or you mean of the hours of operation?
Of hours of operation of.
Or could you, are you saying by special?
I would see it as a modification to this special permit. I mean, so, I mean, this, this is, this is what they've proposed. So presumably this reflects what they, you know, what they think they need. If their needs change, then they come back to the board, that's how I see it.
Can I ask you just a question, Barbara? Just to, I'm not sure if you can answer this, and I just missed it or whatever. If this is a, a, the operations manual, nobody knows exactly, I think you know what, and you're, what you're, are you, are you trying to avoid saying that we come back and like after a certain amount of occupancy has reached or whatever to reevaluate this? Because that seems like that would take care of a lot of this. In other words, come back, let's say, one year from certificate of occupancy, or whatever, reevaluate and, and the board go through it. Are you saying you're trying to avoid that or not?
Yes, yes, I, I think there should be, ideally, the board decides what it wants, and it makes that a condition of the permit. Um, if the board wants, we can include a provision, um, that has some sort of process to, to tinker with some of it, such as the, as the lighting, kind of modeled on that condition about the police chief revisiting the security lighting with the police chief. Ideally, there's really as little of that as possible. I think whatever the board approves, um, if, if the applicant's needs change, then, you know, like any other special permit that the board, or grant, then the applicant comes back and asks for something else. I mean, that's, that would be, you know, even if, even if there's not an explicit condition in here saying that, that would be the case, they can always seek a modification of the special permit. But, you know, I'm happy to include that as a condition.
So, yeah, I mean, they're not, they're, they're not asking to open before seven A M, so I think we should just.
Okay.
But there may be a tenant tomorrow that does. And, and, and that's, that's the problem going to Sam's, is they're pigeonholing, you know, with this. So is there a way to make it that it's?
That's, that's not our problem.
It's not our problem.
Not our problem. Let's stop talking about it. I mean, we'll deal with, we'll deal with it.
Having an understanding for how to modify, I think, is our problem.
Yes.
But.
But we're, we're spending a lot of time on. Sure. It's important for us to understand what it means, but I don't feel comfortable expanding those hours when this is what they've asked for.
No, no, and that's, that's not what I was saying.
So let's, let's just look at the lighting related to the hours that have been proposed. And it, it seems like certainly for retail, that it really is just about the evening into the night. And in my mind, the question is, uh, we, you know, it's pretty hard capped as to when the lights go off, one. When they're fifty percent, right? But then there's a gray area between when a business closes and eleven thirty. Is there a concern about the light staying at a hundred percent till eleven thirty if a business closes at nine o'clock? And they have the, they have the ability to stay open till eleven. So I guess we have to assume that scenario, that sort of the worst case scenario, they're open till eleven. Somebody's open till eleven.
It's going to look weird to have the site inconsistently lit.
Yeah, I think they should all follow.
So, and, and really, if you're, you know, you're pissing and moaning over thirty minutes, I feel like that's, there are bigger issues that we need to discuss about lighting or deliveries or times. Um, I, I think that allowing people to, or, let's say, you know, you're in a store and it is eleven o'clock and you buy something, and so you end up closing or checking out, or whatever you want to call it, at five minutes after. If you're walking out to your car and the lights go off on you, you might be a little alarmed. Having that thirty minutes isn't the biggest deal. Yes, I know that this is close to residential, but most of that, that, that lighting is internal to the site.
Okay, so then here's one inconsistency that I'll point out. The grocery store, which also closes at eleven P M, is, is at full one hundred percent until midnight. And then from midnight to one is at fifty percent. So that's intended or not, there's a half an hour there where they're at fifty, the other, they're at a hundred, the others are at fifty.
And we could adjust that.
Right, so.
I can understand that, but.
I, I mean, I don't know what the reasoning is for that. So I would be fine changing that to eleven thirty and having it be basically the same as the other guys.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, I just saw.
So that's, I'm, I'm kind of looking at all of the retail, restaurant and grocery together and suggesting that under site lighting for grocery stores, that it says on at dusk, dim to fifty from eleven thirty P M. Right, P M to one A M. Basically make it consistent with the other, the others. And then security, yep, sorry.
So that it should pass between what's indicated for the retail area and the grocery store area? Which do you want to control? Which do you want to change it to? I mean, do you, are we changing retail area to what it says for grocery store?
Nope, changing grocery to match retail.
Change, okay, thank you.
For the night hours, and then for the morning hours we haven't talked about. But basically, you know, one to five, security lighting, and then back to one hundred percent from five A M to dawn. Concern, concerns about that?
Just in general, I mean, we're talking about, there's only four and a half, four and a half hours of reduced light every night.
Is there a benefit or a, an inkling to go to, to have fifty percent lighting, say, at the grocery store from five A M until dawn? Do we need the hundred percent?
I'd be okay with five A M to dawn, fifty percent.
I don't feel strongly, if, if the board does, though, I would support.
The, well, just to reiterate, the grocery store hours of operation is six, but it may, okay, may open at five if the coffee is in there. So I guess what that would mean is that there, if we change it to fifty percent, then there would be time, open time when we would not have full lighting. I don't know.
And a hundred percent is, might not be like full hundred percent of the light. It may be, that's something that can always be adjusted to be.
It's a hundred percent of the photometric plan.
Right.
Right.
You can't turf to adjustment.
General security lighting through premises on dusted, I don't know. I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm just concerned about the lights going on full bore at five A M.
Absolutely. And they only went off four hours earlier.
I think on this, I mean, I completely, I can understand where you're coming from with the lighting. And I think, I just think it's important to remember that, you know, the community did want this. And I think to think about not making things too strict for, um, to get the businesses, you know, that, that we want. I wouldn't want to put too many restraints on, you know, getting the retailers. It's just something I've been thinking about.
I think processes like this exist to protect the minority from the tyranny of the majority.
Bill, a quick question. Um, if this were just going under the industrial use, the by right option, um, would we be regulating site lighting?
I think there is, I think there's a very broad, I'd look at.
I've been thinking about that.
Very broad.
Because that's, that's one of my big things with the site.
Some of this would be by, if it's by right, I mean, you know, unless there's an issue or complaint, wouldn't you come up with a lot of this?
I, I mean, I know that this is a budding residential, but if it were in industrial use, the use would be far more intense than what's going on here.
That's right.
Lighting could be very different. The amount of the hours are, just because it's a budding residential, it does not mean, you bought it, it's a property next to something industrial. So there's, I think there's a fine line that we have to walk. And it's not about trying to tame it down for retailers to come in. Retailers are going to come in because the market's going to want it. I, I, I personally don't subscribe to that concern or think that it's, it's a great place to, to encourage people to come or to not have standards out of fear. But at the same, I think that that's an issue to juggle. I don't know that, I understand living close to bright light can be frustrating, um, but at the same time, there's, there's blackout curtains. There are ways to address this on your own property that, as unpopular as my opinion may be, that you bought next to a developable site. You have to, at some regard, realize that not only did you buy next to a developable site, but you also chose to support the project. And maybe that wasn't your personal opinion, but, or that, that particular person, it's just, I, I don't know how, I don't feel comfortable with being stringent that, that lighting has to be at fifty percent between five A M and dawn.
Okay, how about this then? How about this then? Because there's, um, ambiguity about the coffee. We know the grocery opens at six.
Mm-hmm.
How about we just say all on from open of business, coffee or grocery until dawn? So that it's, you don't have an hour of, of unnecessary lighting if the grocery store is not open until six.
I can agree with that, yeah.
So would we essentially be crossing out the five A M and make it at six A M until dawn under site lighting?
Or five A M if the Starbucks coffee.
Okay.
Or you.
Basically, when something opens in the store, the lights go on. It's either five or it's six.
Security lighting from one A M to open, all on from, until dawn.
There you go.
Okay, so if it opens, if, if there's a Starbucks that opens at five, then they all come on, right? If there's, if there is nothing open until six, is that what the board means?
Correct.
Yes.
And then, um, council for the applicant has asked me a couple of times, just if I can clarify something. Um, and it was a response that I gave perhaps too quickly to Sam's question about the ability of the board to condition, um, as a bright use. Um, I answered sort of categorically yes, um, but I probably shouldn't have answered that, that quickly. I mean, there, there, a lot of what I was thinking of is really, was really around sort of the site plan being a part of it rather than the use itself that the board is, um, that the board has been discussing. So if I could just walk that back a little bit, and then when a specific question comes up, I'll, I'll answer the specific question. So I'm sorry I spoke too soon, um, but I just wanted to address council's concern. Um, so that's that. So, um, so so far, the only, if I understand correctly, the only modification to the section three, site specific information, is so far, um, that the lighting, site lighting comes on at whatever time a business opens. Like at five o'clock, if something's open at five, six o'clock, if something's open at six.
With the grocery store area only?
In the grocery store area, I mean. And then was there, were there any modifications to the retail, fast food area? Because I know there was some question about what are those, what, what you could think about those two things to the same, the same conditions?
No, did you also list the site lighting change from, of the dim to fifty percent from eleven thirty to one?
That's under grocery store.
Right.
Yep.
That's the, those are, those are, those are the two changes.
So that site li, of the grocery store area, site lighting?
Uh-huh.
So it's eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty to one A M.
I'll show you what, Bill, maybe I don't understand, sorry. So it's.
So this is the site lighting here?
Yeah. Okay, so.
All right, ready to talk about the three hours?
Just in order to be consistent.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's one of my questions.
Grocery store delivery hours. Grocery store frozen food, three P M to nine. Perishable food deliveries, one A M to five A M, approximately two deliveries. A major forty-eight foot tractor trailer. Concerns, comments?
Sam, you said you had experience with delivery hour restrictions?
Delivery and just hours of operation in business, um, that was part of my email. The first thing I wanna ask a quick question. Because this grocery store is a by right use, can we actually condition this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so just wanted to, to get that off us, off my, my mind, um. There is, I, I have a really big concern with limiting or restricting hours of delivery because this is going to be an enforcement nightmare for us, we do it. The chances of getting a staff member out there during one to four A M., what is it, right, when these, these, one to five A M. when these deliveries are happening, on a day that a delivery is happening, on a, or night, what was that, day, morning, I don't know, whatever, um, where there's an excessive amount of noise that one of the neighbors is complaining about is slim to none. So having this, and this was one of the things actually in Bill's, um, when he posted it out to the list serve, it was something that somebody commented back. Enforcement of this is a very hard thing to tackle. Um, we actually had to, it, it wasn't literally an act of city council to get somebody to go out to enforce something that was related to deliveries and hours of operation that was beyond what they were doing. And we didn't even catch them that particular night because guess what? They closed early and they had no deliveries that night. So out of all of that timeframe, it, it concerns me that this is, if, if we go too far down this path, I think that there's, there's a reasonable timeframe, but it's a little bit tricky. Um, my, my suggestion was trying to find some way to limit the delivery hours at the rear of the store and then open deliveries to, um, to twenty-four hours at the front of the store to allow for some offset time in the back. Um, I don't know that I would stick to the ones, the times I wrote in the email, but I, I just wanna voice my concern from my professional experience on that side as a planner. Trying to enforce something like this might be really hard. I still know that it's the abutters and that's, it's a very, trash pickup, I think is far louder than delivery to live with, um, but it's, I, I, I don't know.
So you are, you've wrote in your email to Bill, limiting delivery hours between four A M. and eleven P M. is, was your one thought?
Yeah, there's, I, I think that there needs to be some sort of limitation, but I don't think that it, we have to find a good common ground of not being too restrictive. I don't know if my hours are too restrictive.
So, are you concerned about the one to five that they've proposed, like, being too restrictive?
I don't think, um, well, so yes and no, the, the three to nine P M. delivery hours, I know that that's what they've proposed, but I feel like we should encourage that to happen at a variety of times versus just in that three to nine P M. window. That might be heavy traffic time, it might be heavy people in the store time, uh, and it's also going to impact the residences that are abutting, um, these properties, whether that frozen food presumably is, is going to be delivered in the back, so it can go directly into the cooler. It might be nice to have a little bit more in the timeframe so that they could deliver. The perishable stuff, I, I mean, it's, again, back to my comment of, you know, you, you bought next to a developable property, there's a, the fine line. I, I don't know the answer. But I feel like there's, you have to try to find some sort of middle ground, I don't know that one to five A M. is any type of middle ground.
Well, I, I think you have to take it in the context of how many trucks are actually coming or going between that timeframe. Based on what Market Thirty-two has said, it's approximately two deliveries during that timeframe. I live on Concord Street, at least two or three semis come down between, I would say, one and six A M. At any given point, and I'm much closer than any of the abutters are to where this delivery point is. So, I mean, it, it's, I, I, I think, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm comfortable with what is proposed here, just given the fact that it's not gonna be a continuous stream of trucks backing up into that delivery section. One night you might get one, another night you might get two. And back when I was a teenager working at Stop and Shop Unloading those trucks, um, they were a lot quieter than what was back then, so it.
Also, I'll also, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll also add to that, that the concern that I heard was not with the deliveries, but with the noise of the deliveries. And there has been a mitigation measure that's been proposed and it's, has some mitigating effect that's been demonstrated. Maybe that's not enough, maybe it's fine, I don't know, but it is, it is something, uh, to, to dampen that and, um, you know, I, I guess, I, I think I hear what you're saying in a way that, you know, if, if they're proposing one to five, which is probably the most sensitive time of the night, then why wouldn't we just give them twenty-four hours to deliver and they could, you know, you know, we don't need to wait till one in the morning to deliver, I suppose? I don't know. Uh, so you could look at it that way. I don't know, I, I kinda, I'm interested, more interested in hearing other people's comments. I, I, I think this has been mitigated to some degree and I, that makes me more willing to accept these times.
And the trash pickup limitation of hours will handle a lot of the noises. I mean, I, my grandma backed right up to a grocery store in a Kmart and I remember spending summers with her. The trash pickup was by far louder than the trucks, but what happens with the trucks is when they bang open their doors. That's the loudest noise you get, the beeping, you, you can kinda sleep through, it generally gets muffled by fences and vegetation. Um, but the banging of the doors open and the trash pickup where they shake it really aggressively to get all the stuff out, um.
Low frequency, that's six thirty A M. to six P M.
Right.
According to town code. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, after, after hearing Chris DeSylva talk about, uh, you know, his, his experience in the trucking industry, after hearing, you know, there generally will be one truck, occasionally there'll be two trucks, uh, I, I just, uh, the mitigation of the twelve foot fence, uh, the requirement of the trucks to enter via the front entrance, I, I find this reasonable.
I think he also mentioned something about turning off the air conditioning in the truck.
Correct, the compressor, yeah.
Oh, con, that's right.
The compressor.
I don't know if that's something added in here, you know, but I think.
Compressor off at site border.
Yeah, that was eye opening to me and I think that'd be something.
Yeah, where's the, where were that, Joe?
Oh, maybe.
So, when you say site borders, that's like parking lot of grocery store?
It's as soon as you cross the property line.
Yeah, entering in the front entrance, switch it off.
Okay. Gotcha.
There's a conditioning.
And what about, I mean, how do you guys feel about suggesting that they have more delivery hours of frozen foods? Or just, you know?
Who's gonna complain if they come before one A M.?
No, no, I'm talking about the three to nine P M.
Oh.
Cause then you've got from three P M. or nine P M. and then one, I mean, you just, you have most of that night.
I mean, would, would you bring that to nine A M. to nine P M. Something like that, I mean.
Yeah, just open it more.
It just encourages like rush hour, at least do like ten A M. just to prohibit blocking up the town as people try to get to work.
Sure. I couldn't, it doesn't seem to hurt.
Change three P M. to ten A M.
Grocery and frozen food, ten A M. instead of three P M. Right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, right. I was also swayed, I think, just by the the notion that, that's a limited amount of deliveries that are going to happen and, you know, if you, you space them out, hopefully that's better.
And then, yeah, I haven't been able to find where there was any stipulation that trucks must turn off their compressors.
It was discussed, it's made into a document.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that that gets.
Added into.
Added condition?
Added condition or added.
Well.
I feel like it should be.
Sounds like a condition.
I think it should be a condition.
Condition.
If that's something that should be explicit. I mean, that's our main mitigation.
Yeah, I mean, we might as well just say the air brakes, right, which I know Chris kinda outlined was like, that's more of a high speed thing anyways, but.
Yeah.
The J brakes.
The compressor and then it was said that there's a possibility to turn off the backup.
He did say that and, and that was, I was gonna ask you about that. I mean, and if we say it and then OSHA tells us no, then they'll win, but.
If, if, if permitted, yeah.
Say if permissible. If permissible.
Also open doors quiet.
Chris said.
I thought Chris said you can turn off.
To, 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 to what's point, just condition it, right?
Yeah.
If, if permitted by law, and if they can't, they can't.
Right. Yeah, backing, um.
Indicator.
I would add the J brake comment anyhow, I agree with Chris, it was much likely that that would be used, but what if someone's zipping down Park Street at three A M.?
Well, well, his point wasn't that, Chris's point was that, that it was going to be additional sign clutter. He said he did.
Yeah, I don't think you need signs, I think you just prohibit it as a condition and then if they start using it, can some.
Oh, okay.
Or still.
I think we should also, uh, I guess, if we, if we can possibly expand this to, um, the approach to the site, not just the property line. Can't, can't you?
Make some sort of time law.
Well, I guess the, the point has been made that the, you know, braking, slowing and turning action of entering the site
Right.
is part of this, it could be, you know, we could, we, we could say it.
You could say it.
I understand it's an enforcement.
I can't guarantee it's enforceable, but you can put it in if you want.
I think we should put it in.
So we're, at what point in the approach are?
At the point where you have to make a decision about doing, about starting to slow down, I guess, and turn in, you know, I mean, I don't know how you word it.
Within five hundred feet of the site, within a hundred feet, I think you need to have some sort of numerical value, I don't think.
Within five hundred feet of the property line, on Park Street.
There you go.
I, I would make a note, um, regarding the turning off of the beeping
Yeah.
of the trucks, I would just qualify that as, you know, equipment permitting or something, because if you've got a truck that can't turn it off and it's beeping.
If it is legally permitted or, uh.
And, um, I don't know the exact language, you know, equi, legally and equipment permitting or, or something along those lines.
Up to the board, I mean, I think the board agreed on legally permitting, but I just wanna make sure if there's agreement among the board, equipment permitting as well.
Yeah.
It seems reasonable, I mean, I'm sure some equipment is, you can't control all the equipment that's gonna be. Just a kind of a gut check here, ten fifteen, we're making good progress. And keep going, um.
Keep going.
Keep going, alright.
What are, what are we going through still?
Well.
So I can have.
Sure, I mean, we, we've, we've, I think we're seventy-five percent, if not more, through the operations manual, site specific information, unless anyone has commentary on anything beyond page three, I think we're, we are pretty close to being done with that. You know.
Did we wanna discuss building signage lighting? We've kind of pawned it off before.
Not, I don't, not yet.
Okay.
I, 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 I mean, to me, I felt like we were at a point where we vote on one and then maybe the other. There's two, right? I, I mean, we, we've had, we've, we've talked about it, I don't know if we're gonna, you know, change anyone's mind.
So what do you wanna vote on?
Well, there's two, there's two possibilities, there, one is the, reverse channel and one's the channel.
Oh.
We've had, I mean, it seems like.
You were talking about hours?
I was talking about hours.
Sorry.
I do not wanna rehash that, that discussion, cause I think you're right, I think that we're at an impasse at that point.
So, okay, good, so, so can you?
It's under Miss General Property, it's a site lighting, building signage, you wanted to defer it until we got to this point.
Sorry.
Do we wanna have it off at eleven thirty P M. or do we wanna have it state that they go off of operating hours or thirty minutes after the business closes?
So.
Well, the sign doesn't need to be open, like, there's lighting for the employees to leave, they don't need the sign.
Right.
So I would say the sign has to go off when it closes.
And that's the default?
Is my understanding, that's, that's the code.
Eleven thirty is the default.
That is section sixty.
During hours of operation.
Point two, point eight. Number two, sign elimination is permitted only during those hours in which the associated establishments are open to the public, so, I'm gonna interpret the, um, you know, this as part of their special permit application.
To ask for expansive.
To ask for, for a, yes, for a special permit to vary from that requirement, even if it was technically in their, their special form of application, I'm gonna treat this as asking.
Got it.
For that, so anything that differs from what I just read, that only during the hours in which the associated establishments are open to the public, the board has to make sort of an affirmative decision to vary it, to, well, I keep saying vary, to grant a special permit to allow that if it's beyond the hours of operation.
So.
The board can do.
I see, if we say nothing, then you'd see little signs going off as, you know, businesses close. I assume that's what.
No, no, if you say nothing, they're all gonna say nothing at eleven thirty.
No, no, what I mean by say nothing is if, if this decision says nothing, that's enough.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Which I guess means if we strike the proposed language. If we leave the proposed language, then it's a, it's consistently on till eleven thirty, every business, regardless of whether it closes at eight or nine or ten or whatever. So two, two decisions, one, do we want consistency, uh, and two, do we want eleven thirty? Now, all, I guess it begs the question, if a restaurant is open till midnight, does the signage lighting go off at eleven thirty? Sounds like it would.
Under this it would, although they would, I think, retain right when they get to twelve.
Well, this, yeah, so building signage on a dusk or off at eleven thirty P M. or off at liquor permit time, so that seems like that would be what would apply.
So, sorry, so that covers the restaurant.
Right.
I, I. I mean, should it not coincide with the hours of operation as we've discussed, otherwise I don't understand why, why does, why does it need to be on later?
Just for, I, I don't know that I agree with this, but I'll just say for the consistency of not having, you know, signs go off.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to coincide with the eleven P M. shutdown of lighting that we've put on, I mean, that's on, I don't know, I guess.
No, it's a point worth discussing, I think.
Um, if, if the businesses are closing, if the retail fast food is eleven P M., grocery store is eleven P M., granted, I think they're, is it explicit what their sign is permitted to stay through, on through? No. It, maybe that they should be turning off at eleven P M. or as the liquor part, permit is, you know, permits, et cetera, kinda thing. Just to help, yeah.
I don't understand, you know, what you're.
I don't see the value in consistency.
Okay.
And I think that having them go off when the business closes is only reasonable.
So you're proposing we strike this and let the, or, or we explicitly state that we tie it to hours of operation?
Yeah.
I would make, yeah, I would make that a condition and it says somewhere, um, in here, if there's an inconsistency between the the decision and the O and M., the decision controls, so what the board wants, we should put in a condition that we control.
And what you're saying is that.
And just from like a energy smart viewpoint, like having extra lights on for a business that's closed
Sure.
seems like a bad idea.
And when we say hours of operation, just to be clear, every individual business has its own hours of operation. We're also defining in here hours of operation. just to be clear, every individual business has its own hours of operation. We're also defining in here hours of operation, which are broad for.
They're like the borders, right?
Borders, right, the bookends.
You could still fall within there.
But you're talking about the hours of, the operation of the business related, tied directly to that individual sign.
In fact, it can, say you're rolling in there at, at ten thirty, and you're like, oh, I'm gonna go stop by, you know, X Y Z store. The light's on.
Agreed.
And that's not, right?
You see the, you see the light on and the store's closed, it's confusing. So instead, the light goes off, the business is closed.
It communicates, you know, succinct information.
Okay.
So we could just use the same language that's in the bylaw. Sign illumination is permitted only during those hours in which the associated establishment is open to the public.
Open to the public, yeah.
That's, I think that's the intent.
I have a little bit of a different opinion. I just, I don't think it will look right if several of the stores are dark. You know, if it's a winter night, and, you know, you're in a section and the signs are all dark, um, you know, I don't, I just, I don't think it will have a good effect. I can't really verbalize eloquently why. But I just, I don't know, I think it'll look strange, and empty, and kinda vacant, and. It'll look like downtown is closed.
Better than burned fossil fuel.
Yeah, and I mean. And that's what it should look like, when you're not, when it's not operating. That's what you think it should look like. Yeah, I mean, I can understand when you're looking at a plan, a big, large planned development, that's big box stores and, um, kind of sterile in its design, then you have lights that are on, you have the reverse channel lit, you, or, I mean, the channel lit signs, you have this very kind of, um, it's like, the, the, the way that celebration looks, it's a very manufactured, consistent look, and if that's, I guess the, the bigger question is, what are we looking for? Are we looking for consistency, or are we trying to create something that is related to the town and has some sort of community feel?
And has like a fine-grained response to that fine grain rather than?
Yeah.
One monolithic.
That is dynamic versus.
It also seems odd to condition, you know, water restrictions and then, but also say, no, burn electricity uses it.
I have a question too about.
Because it looks more consistent.
Somewhat related question about interior lighting. Some places leave their interior lights on too. I don't know if that's related.
We should address that.
Um, so before we get on that, I guess, any other comments on the, um, building signage lighting being tied to hours of operation of the individual businesses?
My opinion is, I think, just from visiting other shopping plazas, I seem to recall that there's a consistent time that everything goes off. I, 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 me personally, I like that consistent feel when going into a, a shopping center, and everything is illuminated. One store might be closed, but it's still illuminated, and you're going next door to something that's open, so. My opinion is, I like the consistent on and off time of the signs, just a personal opinion.
What's going on with the, um, there's sconce lighting, I think, too, right? That's part of this, is that part of the site lighting?
If I remember right, it was both on the site lighting and security lighting. There was a few of them, there were high lightings and security lighting.
So there's sconce lighting and site lighting that is responding to a broader idea, right? That's the consistency, or that is, that is an aspect of the consistency. It's a question of then whether or not the, so, so you'll see, if a business closes at nine, the sconce lighting will still be on until the site lighting goes off at eleven thirty, and then it'll dim and so forth. So there's, there is an aspect of consistency that comes from that, unrelated to the sign itself. I feel like the sign relates to the business being open, myself, and I, I agree that I think it would be confusing to have it on when the business is closed.
And I think we can poll everyone at the appropriate time.
Yeah, okay, we can t- we can probably treat this like our other lighting
So just for now, just candidly, will, will be a condition subject to the board, I guess, that consistently by law, sign illumination is permitted only during hours in which the establishment is open to the public.
That's the proposal.
Okay.
And I guess that would be in lieu of the language that's in here now.
Um.
That would be conditioned, excuse me.
There has to be a condition, we're not updating the O and M.
Sorry, you're s- right, so the, the, the condition trumps the, the O and M, so.
The condition trumps the O and M, um, I could add some language, you know, notwithstanding what's stated in the O and M, um.
So we don't need to strike it from the O and M necessarily?
We don't need to. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's. This is, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
It would make it confusing if we added a condition of the O and M, if we're changing the O and M and.
Um.
Could we just add a condition and replace this language with the, with the same language, you know?
We can do both. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's. The problem is, you know, we can't, I mean, we can't sort of make edits t- to this. This is their document. What we're doing is we are amending this, and I wanna do that through a condition. So striking it for now is sort of what we're doing as notes to ourself, um,
Got it.
as to how to condition the decision to look like what the board wants.
So you don't actually change this, you write a condition that includes all the changes?
And lets them change, they can change.
Correct, yes, 'cause we can't.
That's right. Site lighting coming back from the amendment, you know.
Okay.
That's, that's how I see it. Uh-oh, I'm being approached by council.
No, 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 badass.
Um, yep.
You guys have any other issues on this trash pickup hours, pylon?
I wouldn't mind seeing the trash pickup hours be a little later, but.
Later than, later than six thirty?
On the, later than Saturday. On the Saturday, or the, uh.
Saturday and Sunday. There's no Sa- it looks like no Sunday.
Oh, through Saturday.
So just Saturday night?
Or you could just limit trash pickup hours, my Friday.
Monday through Friday. But no, you wanna, I mean, Friday night restaurants, you know.
A lot of trash.
You need Saturday, hanging out there all weekend.
Right, in the summer. But I mean, maybe a little later than six thirty, as I won't say it on Saturday. I don't know how people feel about that.
Eight AM Saturday.
Perfect.
Just from Saturday, eight AM?
Yeah, I don't have a rating, I think.
Eight, eight to six Saturday. Um, what about pylon? On at dusk, off at eleven thirty? Does that seem like what it should be?
Relatively consistent with the site.
Yeah. So you'd have, you'd have periods where the pylon is off, our site lighting will be at fifty percent?
Yeah, 'cause it could be people going to a restaurant or something, and they kick you out.
Okay. Alright. So we're that's O and M.
I, I, I'm not sure I caught that last. I'm writing as quickly as I can, but I, I'm not sure I caught that last thing.
We decided to do nothing about the, oh.
Trash pickup hours?
No, the pylon.
No, we didn't, no, no changes.
Nothing about the pylon.
And, and I got the six PM to, eight AM to six PM on Saturday, okay.
Yep.
Got it, okay. This is where it gets, you know, we, we need to make sure we're, we're clear. The first thing that comes to my mind, and this is, I'm starting to get a little out of order, but we have not discussed construction, hours of construction.
That's in the, um, construction hours are in the condition of the.
So maybe I'll back up a second, say, one possibility for how we proceed from here is we go back to section nine, conditions of approval in the draft decision, and start moving through and see if there's language in here that is of any concern to people, and we could try to do it relative, relatively quickly. We've touched on twenty-eight, which, um, seemed to have no issue with. Fifty-six was another one that was kind of an issue. Um, I def- I do wanna talk about the construction hours, just to confirm that we're comfortable with what has written. But we could be more methodical and, and go from top to bottom. I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we just go through them? 'Cause I bet we can move through most of these pretty quickly.
I would just like a good understanding of how much longer we're going to go tonight.
Well, okay.
I have to take someone to the airport tomorrow, so I'm just trying to have a good understanding.
Sure, um, can I, can I ask, um, for, I don't know if you can give us an estimate of time, but I, I had kind of thought that the actual process of voting was gonna take some time in and of itself, so.
It, it will take a bit of time, and the reason I say that is because before the board votes, um, you know, I need the board to sort of collectively make the findings that it needs to grant a special permit, and for all of the special permits, you know, that's, that the, you know, the, the, uh.
Just promise, drive-through and assistive level.
Sorry, that, so for all, for all five of them, that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impact, so that applies to all the special permits, and for the, um, first three permits with uses, um, under section nine point three point seven, the board has to find, um, it has to make findings that the proposed use is consistent with the concept plan, you know, that the cumulative impacts are, and then it's similar to the special permit language, uh, and the proposed use will be in harmony with the, um, N D O D. So I would just, I will need the board, or it's not I, the board would need to sort of discuss and, and font, make sure that it can make those findings before it actually votes.
And that's different than what we already went over with the?
It's, it's in addition, I would say it's in addition to, it's not explicit, I think, when Bill prepared, this, these are the criteria, but this didn't address sort of the finding that the bylaw requires, which is just why I'm bringing it up now.
Okay, and.
And I can read, I can read through the language, um, in the bylaw more explicitly.
Is that one vote to cover those four things that you just suggested, per special permit?
Um, I, I would s- I, I. I would say on the first special permit, um, you know, I would certainly want the board, whatever, whatever's the first one, it should explicitly, you know, make the findings both under section ten and section nine point three point seven. I, I, I could live with cutting a little, cutting a few corners as you progress through the other terms, but, you know, I need this, the, the board needs this decision to have the appropriate findings in.
Okay, so there's that. Then we actually have to vote yea or nay on each one?
Correct.
Right, so that's ten votes. I think. Right?
Um, well, no, it's, I mean, it needs to vote on the five, it needs a yea or nay on the special permits, I think.
Which is five, and then the prior.
Findings.
Findings is one per, that's five, so that's ten votes, right?
Well, I. Um, the board, the board, I, I think the board can discuss each of the required findings, um, in the, the case of the, the generic special permit, whether, you know, that the adverse effects, I think the board can discuss that, and and it, the vote of the board is indication that it finds, that the majority of the board finds that such a finding can be made. I'm sorry, I'm not expressing this more clearly.
I don't personally see how we can do this. It's ten thirty. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, it sounds like a solid hour of voting, and I'm I'm kinda losing my ability here.
What's left.
Just throw it out there, right.
What's left to go over.
So, so that, so what, I asked that question to kind of describe the tail end of things here. Before we get to that point, potentially, we could, uh, go through the conditions themselves in some manner. It could be at a, you know, abbreviated kind of, hey, does anyone have any hot points? I guess maybe I'll, maybe I'll ask now, is there anything else on anyone else's mind specifically that we have not touched on? I raised the construction hours.
There was one thing that I had, um, I know there was some discussion in, in one of our meetings between the applicant and, um, Ray Gunnison about some additional landscaping, uh, on her property, some additional buffering. I just wanna make sure that somehow that is captured somewhere.
And just to follow up on Brent's buffering point, to make sure that, I know we talked about it on multiple occasions, I'm just having trouble locating it, that all the buffers will be completely constructed before the remainder of the construction begins. I know that's sort of delineated in the, uh, phasing diagram, but I'd like to make sure we're really specific on that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that was.
So.
And there was also some discussion of the site plan not properly reflecting the height of the fence on the, what was it, the south property line?
The fence, retaining wall and the fence.
Yeah, a budding depth.
There was some confusion about what document was being referenced, and it's really the engineering drawings that control, and, uh, so, you know, again, it's sort of another teed across.
I think we caught that on some of the recommended conditions we had.
Wayne, yours, your document? So the board should go.
I, that's, that's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it, it, in the sort of category of things the board should, you know, visit before it, it votes, it'll just lo- look at, um, the conditions that the engineer pulled out of the D H B conditions.
Yeah, if you have that, I have, I, I think that would be.
That's in the packet called engineering comments to the special changes. It's a lot of people that.
Right, that's another thing that we should go through, is just tick through Wayne's, Wayne's comments, which I think, you know, we, we wanna make sure we are including. Let's do that first. So I'm on additional recommended D H B conditions that need to be added. Or should we? Maybe let's, we, we, sorry, let me back up. We've gone through twenty-eight. Let's tick off fifty-six. Wayne, you've, you've hashed this out with town council?
Correct. What, in essence, what this describes is, um, is committing the applicant to provide, um, inspections and provide documentation monthly that they provide in those inspections. The moment they don't, we can challenge them, and they have to allow us to provide those, and they'll fund those inspections. Um, in addition, um, we agree with the applicant that, uh, at a minimum, we'll visit the site, the town will visit the site at least once a month, and specifically under, uh, items A through L, inspect at least those material, uh, those operations that are occurring, and that that'll all be reimbursed under a typical town that they need to handle.
Thank you. I don't have any issues with this.
Same here.
Sounds good. Alright, fifty-six looks good.
Um, just to, just to clarify, go back to Andrew's, uh, question. Um, Andrew, it says on, um, G, uh, twenty-nine, all conditions, um, vicious precedent to making an application for building permits? Um, it, it captures all prior landscaping, fencing, and related improvements to site, the site above residential properties have been installed. It's on page nineteen, uh, eighteen and nineteen.
Perfect.
It's kind of a long version, but everything's got to be.
Okay, so moving on to additional recommended D H B conditions that need to be added, I'm just gonna skim this myself, and if you can all do the same, maybe.
And I can answer any questions? If there are.
Wayne, on the first point.
Yep.
Um, just to, how, how do we know the baseline of all the adjacent property drainage in order to determine whether it's been worsened?
It's a very good question. I'm not sure.
'Cause I think that it was assumed to potentially be vague.
I'm not sure it's an adequate way of, um, capturing that. I added this condition to protect this board based on some recent problems we had in another project, and I would recommend that we leave this condition or something proximity to it within this, in the conditions.
I, I appreciate that. I'm, my, my mind is just saying, if someone comes and says, it made the drain, you know, I'm having this problem on my property.
Yeah, it's a very good question. It would be a case-by-case thing, and obviously someone would have to prove it to the town and the applicant that they worsened their conditions. This, I don't have a great answer other than that, Andrew, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. That's, Department, does that leave us open for?
I don't have a better answer, to be honest, um.
There's all types of ways, video logs, photographs, it's, it's.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, it's a very good question.
Yes, beyond having this in the decision, there, there, at this point, there really is no way for the, the board to provide greater technical protection to the waters. Yes, beyond having this in the decision, there, there, at this point, there really is no way for the, the board to provide greater tech protection to the voters, um.
And vice versa, I mean, I'm not.
Other than the fact that we have a, a set of site plans that has been detailed by a professional engineer and they should have, you know, they should have thought through all the, all the grade problems. Any specific grading problems on, or adjacent to the budget? Fortunately, I think this site is lower than the surrounding area, so I don't anticipate this being a problem, but just in case.
Yes.
There was a, uh, comment from the public regarding, one, two, three, four, five, bullet six, fence installation, tree clearing, proposed buffer. The last line, changed the word manage to meet.
On which one, sorry?
I don't have a problem with that, the bullet six, fence installation.
Just, I, I caution, um, Mr. Chairman on that, I understand the applicant's comment, um, it, we chose the word manage for a reason.
Okay.
I'm not positive we can meet everybody's expectations, but just for your consideration. I don't think we probably have at this point.
Sure.
I would, I would agree with Wayne. And frankly, I think the inclusion of the word help makes this semi-meaningless anyway. The inclusion of the word help almost mitigates whatever word follows it.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, to help me.
Uh, still, I keep manage, let's keep manage.
Either way is fine.
I, yeah, I think manage is better.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, this suggestive language from the voters, not un- not unreasonable, but certainly, you know, the board agrees to this language, but certainly, um.
I'm, I'm not strongly opposed, my way of, I'm just trying to.
It's meaningless. Word help makes it meaningless.
I agree. Can we strike the word help?
Well, if you do, that has real teeth and it'll take a long time to figure out.
Address.
I didn't mean to make too much, meet is fine, I'm fine with that.
Help me.
Are we changing that?
Just, just to tease it this one, like, if they, if they, if they need and talk and that, you know, what, what's the deciding thing here, you know, one side wants a tree, one side doesn't want a tree? How does that boil down? What, what's the end result of that? Because this, this almost says nothing.
Can we just put a period after clearing?
Is your suggestion it's un- it's unenforceable or it doesn't?
I'm suggesting there's nothing here to enforce, except that they have a meeting, if they don't have a meeting, but it doesn't. Address any kind of outcome. And the word help makes it. Anyone could say something helps something.
You could certainly modify that, I think the intent was have to end the point, have a meeting so everybody knows what the intent is, it is. They may not be happy with the intent, but that's the intent.
And expectations. And, and again, and from my point of view, the voters' suggested language is reasonable.
Yeah, I, I just, I would like to find a way to minimize the removal of trees that don't absolutely have to be removed.
So. So some coffee board can sort of try, try to find some ground in the middle or, or not, just say, um.
Sure, let's make a meet. Three meets and two manages, three manages?
Just strike from and after?
That's, yes.
Tree clearing period.
Tree clearing period, all right, I like that.
Yes.
Perfect.
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Done.
Makes the lesson figures.
Got that, Bill?
Yeah.
Where's table one?
Oh, uh.
Of course.
I, I know, there, I had made a comment at one point about, um, curbing on.
That's granite.
Granite curbing on Parker Street, I don't know where that was, I don't know where that's captured, if that's all in the.
I think that was in it.
Is that in table one? Is, is that table one, Wayne, where?
I'm, I'm recalling that comment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it was. I don't know where it ended up. My intention was that we, that our town roads have granite curbs.
Do we have granite curbs everywhere else?
We have a mixed bag, but we're trying to move to the granite. That's the.
And Parker Street too, I believe, um, it was a safety issue as well, that the, the granite curbs can provide a little bit more, more safety than the, uh, the lower, more slow asphalt curves.
Mm-hmm.
Curbs, excuse me.
I, I, I think we're getting a little bit tired.
Agreed, I proposed that, I suggested twenty minutes ago that we, that we wrap up, but, I mean.
I just said what everybody is saying.
But strangely, we have not.
Well.
So, the, the curving could be something that maybe we could look at for next time. Start pick up there, instead of trying to read through the whole document and find that way that is.
Well, I was only continuing because I thought we were continuing to try to finish.
We're not gonna finish and we're not gonna need to vote tonight, as we all discuss.
Okay, Sam says we don't finish, say it.
I mean, it, it's, it looks like we're just gonna have to, to continue. But when are we continuing to? Not a big long discussion, just a.
You don't care. It's tomorrow.
No, but you have to, when you make a motion, continue to X Y Z, right?
Well, hold on, hold on a sec, let's. Let's all discuss briefly. Are we all in agreement that we need to? Continue?
There is gonna be a long process.
Ten forty-eight.
Yeah. We'll be finishing this tomorrow, whether we start now or whether we start in.
Probably.
Very true.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be specific about language, the, so you continue a public hearing, but in this case, you know, the board would just say resume its deliberations at the next meeting, which is whatever date it will be, so it's not.
Oh, we don't even have to continue, we just.
Continue, yeah, I mean, it's, you, you don't need to use that language, I mean, you can, I guess, we leave a continued discussion or continued deliberations tomorrow, but it's not the same as a, you know, conference meeting.
Understood.
That's all. Because now you're just, you know, you're deliberating during a, during a meeting.
So just so we can be organized for the next meeting, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm fine going later, but I understand no one else is able or everyone else is ready to pack for the night, but what, just so we can be prepared for the next meeting, what, um, what were your plans? Or what's left to discuss in the, um, in the decision?
Well. We'll finish going through Wayne's comments. We can think, think on it, come up with anything we want, revisit anything if we want, if, if things come up, but I mean, as far as the systematic, you know.
Can I suggest that rather than do a systematic run through of every, of the sort of omnibus conditions, that everyone just bring a list of the ones they might want to address?
Well, that was what I was trying to get to, like, if there are certain.
Yeah, in fact, do it the other way.
Yeah, certain points that people want to bring up or still have, want to have deliberation regarding, then that's what we do.
And if we want to even do it, we could just send it to Bill and say, I want to add one points, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever.
I think that might be a little more expeditious, I don't.
It's, it sure would, but I don't know if it would be quite as thorough, that's, I guess, my, um. Gravity towards the systematic approach, I guess, is so that we can say, yes, we touched everything, we crossed it off and we're done.
We did that. No, you're right, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
But I think there's, there's a hybrid there.
I had the wrong priority in mind.
I think you still.
There's a hybrid, that's what we did tonight, it's kind of a hybrid.
Yeah, go through them, but everyone flag already, you know, we're not just kind of look.
I, I certainly am willing to hear people's hot, hot button, you know, issues.
Well, I, I think I'm fine with you going through, I mean, we already kind of, we already went point by point before, before we closed the public hearing, so, I mean, it's, we've all seen it.
I'll fly through, promise. True, but we didn't really talk about anything when we did that, that, so anyways, I, I, uh, I promise I will strike the balance between, um, expeditiousness and, um, thorough- thoroughness.
I have two issues before we finish it, uh, before you, uh, first of all, the granite, you guys, did you decide on the granite, I didn't see anything in there about granite.
I think this granite curb proposed on Parker Street by members of.
Is it on the plan itself?
It's on the off-site improvement plans.
Okay, it's on the off-site improvement plans.
If there's sidewalk proposal on the edge of the road, I'm sure it's granite and I'm pretty sure it was everywhere, but it could be, some sections is even no curbing or it's called curving, um, if there's no sidewalk, but from memory, I think there's curving in both places.
I thought there is, too, that was called out and the, and the decision actually calls out what would be constructed with the, um.
The decision, number forty-four, basically just says, as, uh, detailed on the lines.
Right.
Um, second issue, I have to, it's about if, um, assuming the board wants to take a vote tomorrow night or whenever they continue to. I guess the first thing would be, when would, when would the board anticipate that they would want to meet? Because Sam, you're out tomorrow.
She's out either day.
The rest of the week, I can't, I can't meet the rest of the week.
The question really is, do we want to take a day off or do we want to come back tomorrow?
Let's get it done.
I, I, it's gonna be very difficult for me after this week to, to meet, I just, I've got.
Well, it's either Wednesday or Thursday. I, I think, I think it's, it's, there is no after this week.
Let's get it done tomorrow.
I mean, if, if, if we're assuming that we're, you know, doing what we can to meet the requested schedule, then it's, it's tomorrow or Thursday and that's, that's it.
I would prefer tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay.
Can we have, um, can we have our issue tidied up before tomorrow? Bill, above?
What?
I'm very hesitant to recommend this board take a vote until everything is, uh, up to square.
Isn't that an easy question to answer?
Huh?
Isn't that an easy question to answer?
Well, there's three parties involved, I mean, we sent everything out last week, we're just waiting for, you know, I, yeah, there's no issue, it's just that.
I understand, it's just my concern and you appreciate my position, I'm sure, with the, recommending this board take a vote with the, uh, the option of something, for whatever reason, didn't go.
Well, I know, yeah.
This, that would be peer reviews, fees have to be caught up.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm hearing tomorrow. I'm gonna keep all my materials for once from meeting. I will use it. We're gonna meet here in this room?
Yes, we can meet here, they're, they're gonna leave the equipment, if we're gonna meet tomorrow, they'll leave the equipment, um. Did, um, the other thing is, if anybody, do you have a chance to look at the minutes?
Really, Bill, really?
No, no.
Really good.
I saw them attached to an email.
You wanna talk about the mailboxes they look like this week tonight, Chris? Supposed to like the chair too, but I'm gonna look at the end.